Council Van Lewin.
Present.
Council McElwain.
Present.
Council Kittriss.
Present.
Council Dunsmore.
Present.
Council McCray.
Here.
And we're all here. Ask if there's any disclosure of pecuniary interests under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. Okay, I have, I wanted to make a, make a couple of points before we get into the confirmation of the agenda. And this has to do with an email that was sent out today. So we were, we, I think we received the email from Council Kittriss at 10:27 this morning. I was sent to our CEO and copied to all members of council. So the best time to respond to that is at a council meeting. So I'm going to do that right now. So this is the third time in as many weeks that we've had a surprise going into a council meeting. A couple of meetings ago, Council Kittriss suggested that her staff had inappropriately modified some meeting minutes. After about 45 minutes of discussion, it was determined that staff hadn't done anything wrong at all, and the counselors had his facts wrong. And then yesterday, we had to respond to an assertion again from Council Kittriss that we had not conducted a vote correctly. And that took another 30 to 40 minutes of discussion. So now today at 10:27 this morning, we got an email from Council Kittriss, the morning of this budget meeting, to ask for some questions and to ask to go into a closed meeting for a meeting that was scheduled since October. You know, council meetings are not my meetings. They belong to all of council. And it really is important for all of council to identify if these actions are the best use of council's time. Our procedures by law lays things out so that we can have effective and efficient meetings. And I need the help of all of council to make sure that we're abiding by the tenants of our procedures by law. I'm going to respond briefly to the email since it came to all of us. And I am, I'm not exactly sure what the email was asking about. I'm assuming it was related to a needs assessment. The message was very cryptic. I'm not sure what the information was requesting. I'm also, the day of the meeting, requesting going into a closed session to have a frank discussion about something. Not sure what all members of council should understand by now that there's legal public notice requirements before you go into closed meeting. And we have to comply with those. And there, and we also need a very specific legislated reason to go into a closed meeting. And just having a frank discussion isn't a good enough reason. So we'd have to know what that reason is very clearly. And it has to be according to the municipal act. In addition, when you demand that our CEO respond to an email, the meeting of the day of a meeting, that's not really acceptable either. So if, if we can't go into a closed meeting, there was a quest, request to go into a special meeting. So I just wanted to lay out the process for going into a special meeting. The head of council can summon a special meeting at any time. Or the clerk can summon a special meeting after she receives a petition by the majority of council members. This petition needs to state a specific purpose with a specific time and date. A special meeting cannot be held sooner than 48 hours following the head of council summons or receipt of a council petition. And then the clerk will provide public notice of the meeting. Public notices is critical. I also want to talk a little bit about counselors requesting information from staff. And we've got several emails over the last few months, especially with counselors requiring information from staff. And I think we mentioned this probably in the first couple of months of this term of council is individual counselors have no extra right to information of the township than a public, than a member of the public does. It's only through a council resolution that staff complete reports that includes information that goes to all members of council. So the majority of these requests for information coming out in the last few months would require significant staff time and effort. And what might seem like simple questions from a counselor does not mean that the answers to respond to those questions are, are simple or easy to get to. So I'm going to repeat, repeat a very basic rule right now. When staff need to spend time or effort responding to counselor inquiries or questions, it requires direction from council as a body. We can ask staff to provide a report that pulls together that information because it pulls them away from other work that they're doing. And that requires direction from council. I think we have to be a little more formal when we're asking information from staff. Council needs to approve the creation of a report from staff. Doesn't matter if it's a hundred page report or a half page report. Information has to be pulled together and council has to request a report in order for staff to do the work and pull themselves from other work that they're doing to comply with that. So that's a basic, basic principle that staff only does what council directs them to do, not individual counselors. So I've been wanting to make that point clear, clear, because that kind of came out of the email from Council Kittriss today as well of about staff not responding to questions. And again, a motion has to come to the floor at council and council has to request a report be completed that pulls staff away from other work to provide information. And the reason for that information is critical. And that's where council comes in. If council directs staff to do work to provide information to all the council, you're saying that those, that, that staff is being pulled away from doing other work and council has to be okay with that. So it's really important for us as a council to make sure that we ensure compliance to that principle that, that the information being requested are, is related to decisions that we're going to have to make as a council and not just for information purposes. And that's where council comes in, in directing the, the work that is done by staff. Any questions about that before we get into the confirmation of the agenda? Council Kittriss?
Thank you, Mayor. I have requests, I requested that before the meeting because that's how I was instructed to do for a closed meeting. Said that we need to have notice of possible closed meeting. And so then I was complying with that. In terms of the request, the request that I have asked, it's in the video minutes for October 5th that they couldn't answer that sufficiently. And so I, they said they would get back to me about that. So then I made a formal request at that time and that is over two months ago. So I don't think that my request was outrageous when I'm reviewing these, the budget that we just got four days ago. So that's sort of why I have done that. The, I think that's totally reasonable. If we cannot get feedback on a budget item, which the April 4th emergency law said is not included in the emergency parts budgets in questions, then like we need to readdress the emergency provisions to include budgets items. So that's what was said at the April 4th thing that we all, that was a divided vote also, but so I'm just trying to do my duty for due diligence. The needs assessment does have to do with an expenditure in the 10 year budget plan for an operations facility that we will be borrowing money for. So it is relevant. It is pertinent. And I'm still requiring an answer to that.
So I'm going to repeat something that I just, just finished saying. It's very, very simple. If you want staff to do the work to compile a report that includes information that you'd like to see for something that's on the agenda, put it forward as a motion, get somebody to second it and, and get staff to provide direction for get council provide direction to staff to provide that for a certain date. It's very, it's very, it's very simple. Who said, who said what at a certain meaning doesn't really matter. It's, it's a motion of council that makes, that provides direction to staff to get a report to full council. Any other questions of council before we get into the agenda? Okay, Council Foster?
Thank you, Mayor. I have to, while I agree with you about 50% on your statement, I also completely disagree. I have often made requests for information because the information wasn't supplied in the first place. Take, for example, the sewage plant roof. It ought to have been tabled at the first meeting that there were more than one option, and yet it wasn't. So I think it's completely reasonable to request information. What I do know is often request information remain unanswered. And your worship, you have just found the flames of conflict and secrecy in your statements today. And if this is the kind of climate we're going to have, it's not going to create any sense of cohesiveness on this council. Reasonable questions ought to be, have reasonable answers forthcoming. And I disagree completely with your findings.
Well, do you disagree 50% or 100%? Because you said 50% a minute ago. Anyway, I, I think I'm going to ask another, I'm going to ask another kid. Please don't interrupt me. I can ask another counselor to explain it again because I don't know how to say this any more simply. You, you have, you have to get counsel to direct a report, the creation of report. The Digest Report is a perfect example. When council provided the direction to provide additional information, it was given. Council Dunsmore.
Yeah, I'd like to clarify that because Council Foster was asking for information in a council meeting. And we went around and around and around. And then the next committee, the whole meeting came up and Council Foster brought it up again. And I listened to the discussion about people demanding information they couldn't get. Eventually I put a motion forward that we asked staff to put that in a report and give it to us. It was seconded. It was voted on by the entire body of council. And that's when we got the reports you were asking for. It's a simple process. Section 224, the municipal act says, we have no authority as a counselor. We do as a body. So if there's information you need from anybody, any counselor, put a motion forward, get it seconded, and we'll vote on it.
Okay, that's enough of that. Going on to confirmation of the agenda. I have a recommendation that the council of township of Center Wellington confirmed the agenda for the meeting held December 1st, 2020. Can I move her for that agenda? Counselor Dunsmore, seconded by Council McCray. All in favor? And that is Carrie. Moving on to consideration of the reports. I think we all know what the agenda item is today. We're in a, a budget meeting here. And the first item that we have is a pre-budget report, capital forecast, replacement schedules. And I will turn it over to our managing director of corporate services and treasurer, Dan Wilson. Welcome, Dan.
Thank you, Mayor Linton. In terms of going through this first report, there's a number of attachments attached to the report that has most of the information we need to discuss today. So what I'm going to suggest is that Mark and I go through each attachment one at a time and answer any questions on, on each attachment and go through this report that way. So I guess to start things off with attachment A, I'm going to give the floor to Mark, our manager of finance.
Thank you, Dan. So if everybody could turn to page nine of the agenda, I think Dan's actually going to share his screen here too. Okay. So what we've got here, attachment A essentially shows the changes from our October 5th meeting. You recall the October 5th meeting, we reviewed the first three years of the capital forecast and fielded questions. So the way the attachment A is laid out is we've got the balance per preliminary draft from October 5th at the top. And you can see there's three columns there for each of the three years. And then the next 13 items working your way down the rows, those are the items that have been added since the October meeting. The significant ones have been added are items 12 and 13, the vehicle and equipment replacement. And they are included as schedule D, I believe it is, in our package. And we'll go through those in, in a few minutes as well. So if you take the opening or the balance from the October 5th meeting plus the 13 adjustments, you'll get an adjusted balance which agrees to the total that is in our 10 year capital forecast, which is on page 24 of the agenda package. So that's the last page of the 10 year capital forecast. So with the exception of vehicle and equipment replacement items, all other changes noted above or on that page are funded from sources other than taxation. So there's an item in there that's funded from the modernization grant reserve. There's a number of items in there that are funded from user fee reserves. That'd be water, wastewater reserves. There's an item funded by the county. And then there are a few items in there that are funded from development charges as well. So of those first 11 items, none of them have an impact on the positioning of tax-supported projects that we discussed at the October 5th meeting. My intent was not to go into these in detail and just open the floor, I guess, to questions at this point on the items, on the 13 items that are listed there.
Thanks very much, Mark. Any questions from council? I'm just going to make sure I see everybody here for a sec. So I'll just go around the room quick. Whoops. Okay. Council Foster, any questions on this page?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a question. Mark, I see the total on the summary of a million, 1.6 million for vehicle replacements. That, that is total across our entire fleet, a million six for all vehicle replacements, correct?
That is correct.
Your worship, that is a very, very large number. And I'd like to make a motion that we amend this document and have a moratorium on vehicle purchases in 2020.
So you want to make this motion before we go through the whole budget?
Yes, I do.
Got us of what else is going on?
I've made a motion, sir.
Yeah.
Vehicle replacements in 2020.
Okay, I'm going to go around the room first and then we'll get to your motion. Council Van Lewin?
Well, are we, are we discussing just that first page that that Mark has brought up? Because I feel like we've got something thrown at us here. What?
Yeah, first page. We'll get back to, yeah, just that first page.
Okay, I have no, no specific questions until we digest into it. Thanks.
Council McElwain?
I have no questions about that page.
Council Kittriss?
Thank you, Mayor. I have also concerns about the vehicle replacement and equipment replacement since it is a significantly enlarged amount. And I'd like to talk about that.
Council Dunsmore?
Yeah, Mark, just for clarification, the items on here are not tax budget related. Do DC charges, is that correct?
Some of them are DC. So if you look under the comments portion, it'll actually note how it's funded. So item one's funded from the county. You know, the, the Fergus Fire Station Hose Tower Repair, that one's in 2022. It is actually funded from taxation. So it's in 2022 though. Then we've got a number of wastewater funded ones. The DC ones are item six. Item nine. 10. So it looks like those, there's three DC funded ones.
Okay, follow up if I may.
The vehicle replacement item seems to be the concern, number 12. Is that money going to result in an increase in the tax budget this year? Or is that something that comes out of money that's been collected already?
The majority of that comes out of money that's been collected already, but there, we are proposing a, and I'm just looking at page 26 of the agenda here, which we'll, we'll get to further on. Intent was to go through this stuff later on, but the operating budget impact is an increase of about 27 bucks, $27,000.
Okay, thank you.
Council McCray?
No questions at this point. I prefer to get further into the budget.
Yeah, I can hold off on motions until we're done at least this section. Anything else in terms of this page? Okay, keep going, Mark.
Okay, so attachment B, which is page 10. So if Dan can share a screen again. While he's calling that up, we thought the best approach to doing this so that people could follow along on the same page easily is that we'll just review this page by page. In the past, I think we've gone section by section, but some of these sections can span multiple pages. So as I know it before, we reviewed the first three years of this at the October 5th meeting. I think in the September meeting, we reviewed just the 2021 year. And then our ultimate goal here, when we get into January, is to approve 2021's capital budget. And as in prior years, pre-approved 2022 and 2023, main reason we asked for that is for planning purposes. So the projects can be shovel ready by the time we get to those years. And then years four to nine are basically there for information and long range planning purposes. And information there is fed in from various studies that are being done, like the water wastewater plan, the DC study and so forth, the transportation master plans. And then year 10 is essentially a number of projects that we don't want to lose sight of. Essentially, year 10, 2030 is not fundable. I think there's $80 million of items in there. And this is the way we've done it for a number of years. It's just so we don't lose sight of those projects. So with, with that in mind, I thought we'd just open it up for questions as we go through page by page.
Yep, questions on, on this next page, Council McCray?
Thank you, Mayor Linton. So one question I have is the Culture Action Plan update for 40,000. That's a continuation of the study that we learned about yesterday. So that's one of the detailed studies. I guess I'm referring to the cultural landscape study.
Yeah, that, that question may be best for oh, is that the one more time with the heritage landscape studies?
It's 20, 2019 dash 095, 40,000 under 2021.
Yeah, I'll turn that to our CEO to answer that one.
Yeah, Council, through you, Mayor. That is the Cultural Action Plan. We had about eight years ago, a master plan completed for cultural master plan. When we updated the Recreation Parks Master Plan, it's recommended that we update the Cultural Action Plan. We've succeeded in completing many of the recommendations from the previous plans. So this is about going out to the community and looking at how we can continue and increase our support for culture in Center Wellington.
Okay, thank you. My second question is the SIP update for 50,000. Is that being provided by the county? Or is that the money that we're putting forward?
CIP. Brett, do you want to speak to that? The CIP funding?
Sure. Yeah, the, the CIP funding, it's intended that we'll get county funding. We already have a portion of it. Their Economic Development Fund enables us to make application to them for funding for projects. And so we have 25,000 already and the other 25,000 we'll expect to get in 2021 from the county.
Council Dunsmore?
I've got no questions on this section.
Council Kittriss, questions on this section?
I have a question. Yes. Can everyone hear me? Okay. Through you, Mayor. Thank you. I have a question about the transportation plan update. Is that going to be a new transportation plan? Or like, don't we get, don't we get updates from the one we just completed? And I don't understand why that one would cost $230,000 since the original one, I think only cost about 175. So I'm just wondering why that caused that.
Is this a question for Colin or a question for Dan? Dan, you want to take a stab at it?
I'll, I'll start and I may need Colin's help with the, the cost estimate. So this is considered an update to the Transportation Master Plan that was just passed one or two years ago. It's showing as $230,000 in 2026. 100% funded from development charges.
Did you want to add to that, Colin?
Sorry about that. Had it minimized and all the buttons kind of disappeared there. Sorry. Yeah, just, just to add to Dan's comments, the, the master plans, it's recommended that they be updated approximately every 10 years or so. And, and so the thought is that the Transportation Master Plan would be updated at that time. Certainly, you know, we had, went through an RFP process for the last one. So it's just an estimate. I don't, I don't, I wouldn't suggest that, that that be reduced. It is, it would be 100% development charge funded as, as that, as Dan mentioned. But, and I would just also add that the intent is to coordinate that with the, the active transportation plan update as well. So.
Council Kittriss, follow on?
Um, I guess this is for Colin, this question. Um, will we be getting yearly or by yearly reports on the transportation and fulfilling what we're trying to do in that one? Because it's, looks like it was past 2019. And so this one is basically seven years instead of 10. So I'm just wondering like whether we'll need it maybe in 2029 instead of 2026.
Yeah, no, fair comment. Yeah, I think if I recall, we, the kind of trails master plan that we're looking to coordinate the timing was a little bit ahead of the master plan. So we moved that a bit forward, but you're quite right. It's quite likely that that could be pushed out a little further. But you know, the recommendation is to continue to have the Trails Master Plan study, which I believe was dated 2014 is the, is the last version to have those be completed at the same time because it does impact cycling within the community and how we integrate cycling and pedestrian movements within the transportation system. So, so if, if we are looking at maybe moving those out, you know, I'd suggest that, that they both be, continue to be together, those two studies.
Council McElwain?
The only one really I have a question about is the Townshipwide Job Evaluation Study. That's a just a study on the various levels within the township employees. Whether they're at the right level or the right pay grade for their, what they do or what, is that what that is?
Yeah, I'll turn that over to Andy to speak to.
Thank you, through Mayor. Yeah, that is what we just completed two years ago. That is a cycle of every five years. It's in order to keep everybody at market rate as well as ensuring that we meet our pay equity throughout the organization with male and female competitors. And so it is required legislative for pay equity. And then we roll in the market to ensure that we're being able to keep our staff at a reasonable cost and ensure that we are paying them the right amount for the work that they're doing. keep our staff at a reasonable cost and ensure that we are paying them the right amount for the work that they're doing.
Counselor McQueen, follow on?
Yeah, sorry, I did have another question I realized. Kind of halfway answered already, I think, but there was, we had the Cultural Action Plan on the list as well as the Parks Recreation and Culture Master Plan and can't that kind of be combined together?
Yeah, Andy's gonna speak to that.
Yeah. So the Parks Recreation Master Plan was just updated. The council approved that and there are a number of recommendations to bring that to bring forward that we've been working on. And part of that study was to bring the Parks Recreation or the Cultural Master Plan because it was done several years prior and many of the recommendations were complete are now completed. So the intent was to do a more in-depth delve into cultural master plan. I think Counselor McQueen, you had asked the question with regards to ensuring that we look at the economic impact that culture also provides for our community. So that is what we're looking at is the Cultural Master Plan and then the Parks Recreation Cultural Master Plan, which is not identified until as the update until 2028, which would be a 10-year cycle for that master plan to be updated.
Can I just have another follow-up?
Go ahead, Counselor.
This may not be the appropriate time to bring it up and maybe we'll talk about it later, but one of the things that when tourism and culture were under economic development, we used to refer to small C culture and large C culture as the two different branches of our cultural work. Large C being arts and culture and small C being the cultural heritage, I guess, would be in today's terms. But there's an awful lot of overlap between the two of them as well, and they all feed into economic development. And so I this is something we talked about in 2012 when things got reorganized and I think I was the only one that objected to the new organization, but I still feel the same way that tourism and culture are part of economic development and all of this should be handled under the same cultural person we are hiring as part of the same strategy versus two separate two separate attacks on the on similar subjects. One comment.
Thanks, Counselor McQueen. Counselor Van Loon?
I have no questions on the study section.
Counselor Foster? Counselor Foster?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Sorry about the delay there. Seemed to have a technical issue. Referring to the document, I I know we have almost $2 million worth of studies on that page. My question for Colin is near the top of the document, Colin, 2014. There's a stormwater study, master plan study. Can you explain to me what a stormwater master plan would be? It's $150,000. I'd like to know what that is.
Colin?
Yeah, yeah, through Mary Linton. So so I think we went over this through the through the storyboards, maybe a few months ago, but to refresh counsel's memory. Stormwater Management Master Plan is really in response to growth within the community, we're going to have infill intensification occurring within areas of the built up areas of Ferguson, Alora, and really examining how we're going to manage the increase in runoff, stormwater runoff from those areas. And so it looks at it from a quality perspective. We're looking at runoff water quality. Is there ways to improve water quality before it's just charged to the stream or river? And and then also quantity, we don't want to have flooding occur, basement flooding, area flooding within the community. So it examines our pipe system, what we call the minor system, and then also the major overland flow system to ensure that we've addressed any flooding risks. So so that's that's in a nutshell, a war or a stormwater management master plan. We're also look at some of the the future development areas just outside the built up areas and put together some some high level concept plans for for how to manage stormwater in those areas as well.
Counselor Foster, follow on?
Thank you, Mayor. Colin, I we've been dealing with stormwater for a century or more. Can you help me understand what is new here? We all municipalities have to deal with stormwater and runoff and and what exactly are we going to study? Why? Why not spend the money on actual stormwater infrastructure?
Yeah, fair enough. Thanks for the question. So we're looking at, again, there will be more stormwater runoff generated as we intensify as new development occurs within the built up areas. And so it's ensuring we need to do this to examine the conveyance systems, whether it be piped or overland flow. Look at opportunities to maybe incorporate low impact development to encourage recharge back into the groundwater system. Also look at water potential opportunities to improve water quality as well for discharges to the river. So again, you know, I know it's it's been something that we've been looking at for a while, but this is a best practice in new communities, especially as as infill intensifications happens and we're seeing more runoff occurring. And this just helps a municipality put together a solid plan in terms of what the capital needs are going forward, as well as look at potential funding opportunities as well.
Any other questions for this page here? Counsel Foster, another topic?
Same topic, Your Worship. Thank you. Just one last question, Colin. So what we're proposing here is you're going to hire a consultant to do this work. Is that correct?
Yeah, so a qualified engineering consultant retained through a request for proposal process would be likely the way we proceed.
Thanks, Colin. Any last questions for this page, Counselor Kittriss?
Thank you, Mayor. I have two questions. The CIP update. What exactly is that? Since we have a fairly successful CIP program right now. And also the Cultural Heritage Landscape Study phases. I thought the cultural study was, are those the technical studies that we talked about? I just wanted to ask that.
Yeah, the the answer to the second question is yes. The first question that you asked. Brett, do you want to refer back to that question, the CIP?
Yeah, I can answer that. So our CIP is now about, it's about five years old. And so CIP needs some periodic review. On top of that, we have when the county did their own CIP study a few years ago. They provide additional programs that currently under our CIP, because ours is limited to the commercial and industrial areas. There's county programs that we don't support in our current CIP. So we need, we we want to look at expanding the scope of our CIP to include other programs that might be available at the county level. The other part of it is I think the county's done attainable housing strategy and study, and one of the recommendations there too is that we look at using CIPs to to fund housing opportunities as well. So it's A updating our our own because it's been around for five years and then expanding the scope to look at other programs that we could enter into. It is customary after a certain period of time to start to see changes in what people are asking for as far as their their programs and the questions that we get on our current CIP program. So we want to make sure that it stays current.
Any questions from any other members of council? Counselor Kittriss?
Thank you, Mayor. This is just a follow up about the CIP. So the the county's CIP has this attainable housing. So how does that apply for? How does that apply if we added that to ours to for residents for attainable housing? Is or is it just for larger builders of attainable housing?
Well, that the the housing part that's in the county, it's not in the county CIP yet. It's a recommendation from their attainable housing strategy that a CIP is one of the options. So but the other part of it is the CIP that the county has. County itself's not authorized to actually have a CIP. They have funding that they can only participate if the local municipality does as well. So in there, the county CIP currently, there's agricultural programs. There's things that would benefit residential. We may have heritage things that we want to look at as a result of the cultural heritage landscape. So it's looking at the scope of our CIP and seeing if there's more programs that are available with funding at the county level that we can take advantage of.
Hey, go ahead, Mark. Next page.
Okay, so the next page. Just wait for Dan to get on the screen there. The only thing I'll point out here is there are a number of fire items that are all related and they tie back to the Fire Master Plan that was completed a few years ago. So I don't know if Dan can move the cursor around those, but they started 2010 dash 002 and worked away all the way down to 2018 018. So that's the land purchase. So the the land purchase for future fire hall is 100% DC funded, the 600,000. And all of the other items are all, sorry, not all of them. The very first item, equipment for additional firefighters, 100% DC as well. All the other items there in the middle are funded from debt or proposed to be funded 100% from debt. And repayment of that debt would be 100% from development charges as it's all all those four or five items are all growth related. That was the only comment I was going to make on this page.
Questions, comments from council on that page there? Counselor Foster?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for Chief Patton. Chief, it's in 2020, it's proposed to replace the two half-ton trucks just under $100,000 in the tell me the the mileage and the age of those two trucks that require replacement.
Chief Patton, do you have that detail on the scribble on the back of your hand or anything?
Through you, Mayor Linton. I do have the years of the truck. The 45B is 14 years old. That's the one housed in the Ferguson Station. And the one in the Laura Station is 18 years old. Both trucks were supposed to be replaced. Well, they have a 10-year life expectancy and I believe there's a report coming up in this meeting regarding a tender. We went out for tender with for them this year.
Okay, sorry, this that's not even on this page. So let's leave that. That's a the vehicle replacement schedule. That's not what we're talking about right now. Counselor Van Loon? Counselor Van Loon?
Yeah, sorry about that. Dan's page is over top of my page and I wouldn't come up with my button. I keep trying to move Dan's page away around too. It's not working, Dan. Anyway, no, nothing in regards to where are we increasing our thermal imaging cameras or those replacements?
Mark?
For the most part, anything that's on the capital budget, so this 10-year forecast should be new stuff, not replacement. Anything that's a replacement, we'll get to on the replacement schedule. So this should be two new thermal imaging cameras we're going up to in our inventory.
Thanks, Counselor Van Loon and Counselor McQueen. Just a reminder to council that we've gone through the first three years already. So we were hoping to focus more on years four to 10 during this time because this has already gone through council, but just a reminder that we have gone through most of this already. Counselor McQueen?
I have nothing on this page.
Counselor Kittriss?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a question. But it's on the first page. It was under corporate and it's about the new photocopiers.
Yeah, sorry, let's stick to this page. If we if we don't, let's go page by page. If there's a final question at the end of it, then we'll respond to it, but I want to stick to our pages here. We're spending considerable time on each page. You have anything on this page?
Well, um, we were just dealing with the studies the first time and now we added the corporate and the municipal building. So I'm just asking about the photocopiers.
So just just to confirm with council, we're doing everything on each page. We're going page by page, not just the section on a page. So I thought that was clear, but maybe it wasn't. Go ahead with your question about photocopiers.
So my question for you, Mayor, is for the photocopier, we have $100,000 here. And I was wondering what that's if I is if it's, it seems that that's a purchase. But I'm wondering what the service contract is on top of that. And I'm wondering why we don't lease, which always usually has the service contract.
Mark, you want to take a stab at that or Dan?
I can start. Dan can, I guess, add in. So historically, we have purchased the photocopiers. They are due for replacement. I think originally they were due for replacement 2020 or 2021. So they're getting a little little bit on the old side, but they're still running fine. So that's why they're not due for replacement 2022. The expected life is about five years. So yes, when we purchased the photocopies we have right now, we did look into an analysis of lease versus buy. And in that case, you know, five, six, seven years ago, whatever it was, it was determined that it was cheaper to buy them. We were able to get a good package through an RFP also that gave us a good service contract as well. So the analysis was done years ago and it would have been presented to council, I would assume, through a through an RFP process.
Go ahead.
So we'll do the same kind of analysis again when we get to 2022 as well.
Okay, thanks, Mark. Go ahead, Dan, if you have any to add.
Yeah, thanks, Mary Linton. Just to add to what Mark is saying, as he said, we would we would do a lease versus buy comparison at the time when we need the new photocopiers. But in addition to that, accounting rules for municipalities show that leasing equipment would have an impact on our debt capacity. So that's one of the one of the downsides to to leasing equipment. We if we do lease anything, it's treated as debt and it one of the downsides to, to leasing equipment. We, if we do lease anything, it's treated as debt and it's, it's a direct impact on our debt capacity limits established by the province.
Thanks, Dan. Anything for the page that we're at? Anything else? Okay, Mark, go ahead to the next page.
So are we moving on into page three at this point?
Yes.
Okay, it looks like Dan has anyways. All right. So now we're into kind of the transportation, public works section. So this whole page here deals with, or the majority of this page deals with the capital, capital levy, OSIF funded projects or a bridge plan. And that bridge plan is on page 25, the agenda package. So we'll get to that next. This, this whole page is comparable. It ties in exactly to the bridge plan. We did go over it at the last meeting on October 5th. And then I guess at the bottom is the start of the public works other section as well. So I'm not sure if anybody has any questions specifically on this page, but we will get to the bridge plan next.
Okay, any, so do you want us to have detailed questions about bridge plan? Is there, is that we're going to, we're going to talk to that in the next section?
I think if it's bridge plan specific, it's probably easier to talk about the projects when you actually look at attachment C.
Okay. Okay, so we'll hold off on bridge discussion. So anything besides bridges, any questions besides bridges here? Counselor McCray?
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I have nothing. I'll, I'll save it for the bridges.
Okay, Counselor Dusmar? Counselor Kiettris?
I'll save that.
Counselor McQuain?
Nothing at this point, though.
Counselor Van Loon?
Nothing at this point.
Counselor Foster?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have one question. Item 2010-031. Question for Colin Baker. What is the, how many hours are on that truck that's going to be replaced? And what year is the truck? This will be a replacement vehicle, replacement snowplow, single axle. The one that's replacing Colin, how many hours and what year is it?
Through Mary Linton. So this is actually an additional vehicle. So an expansion to the fleet. So it's not, not, not a replacement.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mark, next page.
Okay, next page continues on with the kind of the public works other section. Then we get into some of the rural roadways as well. The only thing I'll point out here, you'll see the item highlighted in yellow. It's a corporate operations facility. So in line with what we did back in the October 5th meeting, the $6 million estimated project cost and will be funded from debt has been removed pending a review with council. But one thing to keep in mind is that project will likely be proposed to be debt funded. So it has no impact on the timing of other capital projects that are placed within the 10 year forecast at this point.
Questions from council on, on this page? Counselor Foster?
No questions, your worship.
Counselor Van Loon?
Nothing right now.
Counselor McQuain?
No, I have nothing.
Counselor Kiettris?
Yes, I have a question. And this is page four. Am I correct?
Yes, page four.
In the rural roads, 2022, there is the eighth line. No, it's, it's a, all the eighth line roads. I'm just wondering why they're all just, like, some of those roads are quite, in quite good shape. And I'm just wondering why they're all just being done at this time.
Yeah.
Colin?
Yeah, through, through Mary Linton. So, yeah, so this is, this is eighth line Pilkington, the western portion of the township. Yeah, so our road condition assessment and just the level of maintenance kind of tells a bit of a different story with, with eighth line. It's it's in, it's in pretty rough shape for most of it. So we've, we've taken an approach where we're, we've identified kind of the worst sections of it, again, based on our, our condition, pavement condition ratings from our road condition assessment completed a few years ago. And kind of staged the asphalt resurfacing for the various sections of eighth line. So so we've got the first section from Middlebrook to Wellington Road 18 in for 21. And then the section south of County Road 21 to side road 10 in 2022. So again, we've, we've, as you may have noticed, we've signed them as a, as rough road kind of north to south through the whole section, just to give in the state of deterioration. And, and even posted a, a warning 50 sign on, on some of the worst sections. So so it is, it is a very poor condition road.
Counselor Dusmar? Counselor McCray?
No comments, Mary Lynn, except to say that I've received numerous complaints from residents about the poor condition of eighth line and asking when we're going to get it done. So it's great to see it's, it's on our schedule.
Okay, Mark, page five.
All right. So page five just continues on with rural roads and then gets a start at urban roads. I didn't really have any comments on this page. So I'll just open it for questions.
Sure, thanks, Mark. Counselor McCray?
Thank you, Mary Lynn. This is more a question. In all the years that I've lived here in the community, the one puzzle I've always had is why there are certain streets in our urban areas such as in Salem, Bellwood, where they continue to remain as gravel. And I'm wondering why we couldn't look at some point either tar and chipping them or paving them rather than leaving them as gravel. So ideally, I'd like to see added way out in 2030 is to have them added as being tar and chipped or paved at some point. I don't know what other members of council think about that.
Colin, you want to comment on, on that? I'm sure that it's, it's been discussed in the past. It does kind of, Salem, as I live here, does stand out as being gravel roads in a fairly rural, rural, urban setting. I mean, so what, what discussions has, has staff had about that?
Yeah, I know. It's, it's certainly a topic that comes up every once in a while, especially in the spring. Why don't we, we pave more, more of the gravel roads? And it's, you know, it's a possibility. You know, we want to make sure before we pave that there's adequate, you know, structural base to the road. And there's proper drainage. You want the, you know, any paved surface to last as long as possible. So those are important considerations. But you know, from, from, you know, a staff perspective, you know, those are kind of seen as, as increases to existing levels of service. And, and so for the most part, you know, there's maybe a couple of projects that are paving existing gravel roads. But, but for the most part, those are, are either in year 2030 at the, the 10th year of the forecast or, or they're not in it at all. So it would be quite costly, I think, to, to include that. And it would certainly, I think the impact would be kind of what we refer to as the ripple effect. Because we, we tried to identify the, the funding of available funding for each year in terms of tax supported funding, that it would, it would certainly have a, an impact in pushing some other projects out to further years. But, but it's, you know, it's from a technical perspective, certainly it's feasible. It's just, you know, from staff's perspective, where that, where the priority of that would sit with, you know, replacement of resurfacing of our existing surfaces, you know, which, you know, as councils are aware, we're, we struggle to keep up with on a given year as well.
I just wanted to follow up with Counselor McCray's comment about a tar and chip. There is one, one street that's tar and chipped, Mill Street in Salem. Is, has that ever been looked at as a, as an option, a less costly option for Salem?
Definitely, yeah, definitely. So we've been, been using tar and chip the last couple of years. We did a couple of the, oh, three of the, the crescents just off Gwell Street, the south end of Fergus and, and also Stevens Court as well as, as a, you know, a bit of a cheaper alternative to hot mix asphalt. And, and so, you know, certainly it's, it doesn't perform the same, the tar and chip. There is still some loose material that gives it a bit of a, a look of gravel. But, but definitely, and of course, the life cycle, it, it needs to be kind of refreshed on a more frequent basis. But these quiet residential streets where there's, you know, not the heavy farm or tractor trailer traffic typically on these streets, you know, they would be likely a good candidate for, for the, for the tar and chip treatment.
Counselor McCray?
Thank you, Mary Lynn. All I'm proposing is that looking at the 2030 to 2040 year period was to slot in somewhere and leaving it up to staff to decide is to look at doing something with these gravel roads and perhaps converting them over to tar and chip.
Yeah, that's something, that's something that would, as staff have, have indicated, that would be something that would require council direction to put that in there. So, you know, we can, we can look at that as a motion in the future, if you'd like to do that, Counselor McCray, but it would require council direction. Counselor Dusmar?
Yeah, that just tweaked my memory. We have a report coming to council from staff on the condition of rural roads. Could it be a part of that report?
Counsel, Callan, can you respond to that one?
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Yeah. So, so yeah, we do have a, a report coming forward in the near future, looking at the, the gravel road system and kind of maintenance requirements, the condition, overall condition of the gravel roads. That wasn't in the original scope was, was looking at, you know, candidates for, for tar and chip. We do know, you know, there's, there are some, I guess, maybe rules of thumb out there in terms of when to convert higher volume traffic roads to asphalt. But yeah, right now, you know, coming up with a, a list of potential roads is, is that a scope for, for that gravel road condition study that we have planned for?
Counselor Dusmar, did you have anything else on, on this page? No? Counselor Kiettris?
Thank you, Mayor. I have to agree wholeheartedly with Counselor McCray. I've had many complaints of people that live in Ward Five that have gravel road, gravel roads. They're in town in the, and they are paying optimum taxes. And I have wondered when that would be part of our plan at some point. So I am prepared to make a motion that staff study the urban roads that are gravel and have a develop some sort of plan for how we are going to potentially pave those in the future. I mean, I'm not expecting this next year, but I'm, I think that they need to study this because I have taxpayers requesting why they're paying optimum taxes for, you know, they don't have, they have wells, they have crap, but they're paying higher taxes. So I just want to know, perhaps have the staff list those and make a plan. So I'd, I motioned that, that the staff do that.
Yeah, we'll get to motions at the end of 5.1. We have another one from Counselor Foster that we're going to get to. We're going to save the motions. I won't forget about it. We're going to save it till the end of the section. So all, I've, I've captured your thought there, Counselor Kiettris, and we'll make sure that we, we get to that at the end of the section. Counselor Kiettris, any other comments about this page?
No.
Counselor McQuain?
I have none for this page.
Counselor Van Loon?
None for this page.
Counselor Foster?
None for this page. Thank you.
Okay, Mark, page six.
Okay, page six just continues on with urban roads. So I don't have really any comments on this page as well. Just open it for questions.
Questions from council? Counselor Foster, page six.
Thank you, Mayor. It was a question for, for Mark. I've been looking, it may just be because of Zoom and a small document, but I was looking for St. George Street East, which was deferred a year. Is it on this list? Or previous page, 2019-104? That would be Cameron to, Cameron to Gard Shore.
Yeah, it is on this page. Do you have a question about it?
I just wanted to, I didn't, I didn't see it there. What's the number? Wait. No, this, this Cameron to, I'm, I'm talking about Cameron to Gard Shore. Not Gallery to Cameron. Is it on the list?
I don't know. We're both looking at the same list. Do you see it on the list? Like?
Looking for it on the list. It was deferred one year, which would be next year. So I'm just looking for it on the list and I'm unable to find it. It may just be because of Zoom and the small document.
Dan?
And is it in 2021? That's really what I'm.
Sorry, it looks like it's 301-0828. So that would be probably on the next page.
Okay, I'll hold my question.
It's on the next page. Yeah.
Thank you, Mark. Sorry about that. It's just an IT issue, your worship. It's hard to see the document.
Yeah, yeah, I know. Counselor Van Loon?
Nothing at this time. Thanks.
Counselor McQuain?
Sorry, I was having a little trouble on mute in there because I'm flipping between pages. I have nothing for this page.
Okay, Counselor Kiettris?
Um, we're on page six. I have questions on the last one of page six for page seven. So I'll deal with that on page seven.
Okay, Counselor Dusmar? Counselor McCray?
I have nothing, Mary Lynn.
Okay, page seven, Mark?
Okay, no comments really on this page. Other than we're just continuing on or, or ending the urban roadway section. And then there's a storm drainage section as well. And then I'll just point out, yes, that St. George, Herrick to Gard Shore sitting in 2022. It's project 301-0828, right above the F1s. Yeah. So if there's any questions.
Counselor McCray?
I have nothing, Mary Lynn.
Counselor Dunsmore?
Yeah, my question, I guess, would be for Colin. I see that we've got some actuator replacements for the traffic signals. They would be 20, 21, 23, 24, and 25. Those are the indicators that when people get to the intersection, it activates the, the intersection. Am I correct in that? And judging by the price, it's not the the expensive apple ones that we were looking at in, in the discussion we had with somebody from Orangeville, right?
Right. Yeah, those are the, the traffic control pods that control, detect the vehicle presence right at an intersection. And so, yeah, those are, are looking at replacing what's there with that traffic control pods. So it's, yeah, similar to the discussion, you know, automating, you know, the light, if there's no vehicles there, you know, the light can stay green for the other direction a little longer. So that's, that's what those are for.
Council Kittriss, anything on seven?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes. I'm wondering what this AODA audible is exactly. Can you just explain what that is? A lot of them in different years.
Yeah, 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 through Maryland and so those are for, for the visually impaired to, to help them with navigate through the intersection through our busier signalized in, in intersection. So over the last several years, we've been, been upgrading them. You may have noticed in the downtowns and our newer intersections have the, the audibles already installed. And so this is going through some of our existing intersections that don't have them and retrofitting with, with the audibles. Again, it, as soon as the light goes green and the pedestrian is given the, the okay to go, certain noise happens. It used to be a chirping bird. I think it's something else now. And that indicates to the individual that it's, it's safe to cross.
Council McQueen?
Yes, I just had a question about the Geary Road Col, Colburn Street traffic signals, which are scheduled to way out and while they're really not scheduled, I guess, basically. And I kind of was under the impression that was going to happen as part of, as part of the Colburn Street rebuild as it goes through Storyville housing development there. So the story, Brooke, I should say, sorry. Anyhow, I thought it was all part of the same building. So I'm just surprised to see it out in, in Never Neverland there.
Yeah, Colin?
Yeah. So, so that, that intersection is, is identified as SFA. So that's service finance agreement. So the thinking with, with, with those ones are that those would be front ended by a developer. And, and, you know, it constructed through a development agreement. So for this one, kind of the way that I kind of envisioned this, certainly, yeah, Storybrooke is adding traffic to, to that intersection, to that area. We also have another planned development just north on, on Geary, kind of across from the transfer station. What we call the, the Ainsley property. And, and so I think, you know, as we start to look at that, that subdivision and that site and the potential improvements to, to Geary from the entrance to that subdivision down to, to Colburn. At that point, we'll, we'll revisit kind of the timing and the need for those, for those signals at that intersection. Thank you.
Dan, go ahead.
Thank you, Mary Linton. Just, just to follow up on what Colin mentioned about SFA or service financing agreement projects. Our strategy is typically to put those projects in year 10 of the forecast. And then when developers come forward and the SFAs that the agreements are drafted and finalized, then we position them within the 10 year forecast based on, based on that agreement. And as Colin mentioned, they're typically front ended by developers. So we can put them in year 10 until we know otherwise, based on developer conversations.
Council Van Lewin?
No, I have no concerns on this page. It's, it's very difficult because a lot of these road projects, they're pushed out. There's so much data to ask when you get into the year five, six, seven, eight, that there's, there's a lot more to needed in order to have a, an in-depth, unless there's a road on concern. So, thanks.
Council Foster?
Thank you, Mayor. I did have, I did try to summon a question on the previous page. I hope you'll forgive me if I ask it now. My question is regarding BD line at St. Andrew. Colin, it's 200,000 slated for item 219018. What can we expect to see there? Will we see a full set of lanes and a stoplight? Can you describe that project for the benefit of folks in Fergus? That's a fairly high priority intersection for me.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, for sure. Thanks for the question and, and through Maryland and so, so this is a project being led by the county. It's really, it's that's, it's their, their intersection. And, and they are proceeding with, with a, a full signalization for that intersection. The township component is, is really the sidewalk, maybe relocation. There might be some minor storm, storm walk, storms who are maybe relocations or replacements to, to be conducted as part of this. But yeah, full, full signalization of, of that intersection is, is the, is the plan. And, and the county, as, as far as I'm aware, are planning to implement that next year.
Thank you, Colin.
Great. Onto page eight, Mark.
Okay, so page eight is all wastewater projects. So one thing to keep in mind with the wastewater projects, they're mainly funded from either wastewater rates or development charges. I don't have any specific items to, to mention here, so just open it for questions.
Okay, Council Foster?
Yeah, item 2024, 20, 201045, it's slated 10 years out. I, I just want to be clear on what that project is. It's on the first line. Colin, can you describe that project to me?
Uh, sorry, just to clarify, 2010 dash zero four five, that's the, is that the project? Council Foster?
Yes, that's correct. Thank you.
Okay, first line sewage pumping station and forced main to existing system. Is that the one?
Yes, the one. Yeah, that acronym. You've probably just answered my question.
Okay, there we go. Yeah, it's, it's a proposed sewage pumping station on first line and connecting to the, I guess, the gravity sanitary sewer system, probably over at Bridge Street. And so again, kind of this one's very, this has been identified, it's in our development charges background study. And, and depending on how that, how that property on first line develops really determines the need as to whether or not that, that pumping station would be required. But it's, that's why it's in 2030 right now and shown as, as.
So first line, first line was Gary Colin? Which first line?
First line, I think that's, that's Pilkington, isn't it? I just said that the Jefferson Alora wrote that first line.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So it's right where Sterling Marathon is being built, kind of at the, the southern end of that property.
Thank you, Colin.
Council, Council Van Lewin?
No, no concerns on this page.
Council McQueen?
I have no questions on this page.
Council Kittriss?
I have no questions on page eight.
Council Dunsmore? Council McCray?
I have no questions.
Okay, we'll get started again. It's two thirty. Mark, are we on page nine or ten?
I believe it's page nine, which is actually page eighteen of the agenda.
Okay.
I'll just wait for Dan to get the screen up. There we go.
Okay.
Okay, so the only thing I'll point out on this page, and this is the end of the wastewater projects, is the very last wastewater project there F zero one seven one. That's the future expansion for this wastewater treatment plant. The total over the three-year period there twenty twenty four to twenty twenty six is thirty million dollars. It's included in the budget as it has for the past couple of years, I believe, at ninety percent funded from debt. And that is equal to the growth portion of the project. So the future repayments of the debt on that will be all funded from development charges. And the other ten percent of the project would be funded from wastewater reserves. So I'll just open up that page for questions as well.
Thanks, Mark. Questions on page nine, Councilor McCray?
I have nothing.
Councilor Dunn's more?
I have nothing.
Councilor Kittriss?
Thank you, Mayor. I thought I should just ask about the Dixon Drive Employment Land Servicing Phase One. And there's three here. And I guess I'll just ask it at this time because there's the waste wastewater and the water and the lay, I guess, the roads. And it's one point three four million dollars for next year. And I'm wondering, considering that the O L G, we're getting an O L G report about this. And this is going to be financed by that. Should I just ask that at that time? Or would you want to? I'm just wondering like how this is going to be financed through that old G funds.
Yeah, I'll ask Dan and Mark what they'd prefer. Does it matter to you guys whether we talk about this now or during the O L G report? Dan?
Thanks, Mary Lynton. We do go through the financing of those projects in detail in the third report on the agenda today, so it might be better to talk about it with the O L G report.
Okay, that's a good idea. Then we have it in context of all the spending for O L G. Okay. We'll do that. Anything on this page besides that, Councilor Kittriss?
No.
Councilor McQueen?
I have no questions on this page.
Councilor Van Lewin?
Yeah, just quick question on the, sorry if you can scroll your screen up there, Dan. The future expansion of wastewater treatment plant Fergus, is that the that project there is debt financed? But where does that place us with our our total percentage of debt financing per tax revenue? Is that the project that pushes us up?
Yeah, go ahead, Dan.
Thanks, Mary Lynton. We're actually going to get to an analysis of debts in the last attachment to this report, which includes the debt plan for the expansion to the Fergus Treatment Plant. So we'll we'll discuss that in in a few minutes.
Okay, great. Thanks, Dan. Councilor Foster?
Thank you, Mayor. I believe it's the screen's rolled up. I believe it's twenty twenty fifty four. Could we roll up? No, sorry. Yeah, that's twenty twenty dash fifty four. My question would be to Colin Baker. Colin, that that's on the docket for next year. I'm just wondering that that corner. First of all, can you explain what that work's going to be? But more importantly, that corner, especially southbound, there's some visibility issues there. You can't see east and westbound traffic has difficulty seeing north and southbound on Proost. I'm just wondering if there's anything we can do to improve visibility on that intersection while we're doing this project? Or maybe it's already on the docket?
Yeah, through Mary Lynton. So yeah, I'll start with the the project descriptions. It's, this is an ongoing maintenance issue that that we have at this location with the, it's a really shallow sanitary sewer. It has very little little insulating cover. And it's almost every winter freezes and backs sewage up into basement in that area. And so so we've looked at a number of different options to to address that. And and this project basically implements, you know, that that option to to replace that sanitary sewer and install a bit of a pumping system. And so that's that's a description. So it's very, this is a really focused project. It's not connected to a larger reconstruct of the road. We're not doing the water main. We're this will likely just require a small trench, you know, within the roadway to make it happen. So so very little disturbance to the road itself. But I'm I'm aware of the of the sideline issues at Provo and St. George West. It's very, very challenging in that area with the buildings and the just the geometry of the road, steep slopes there. So vehicles are, you know, coming down that hill fairly quickly usually. I also used to live on St. George Street as well, so I do know firsthand the challenges with that intersection. It's it's just a lot of those. It's very difficult to to address the sideline issues. But, you know, if there's if there's that physical obstructions in the way. But is there is there a particular like obstruction that you're thinking of in that area, Councilor Foster, that like is something that can be removed? Is there?
Well, it's difficult, as you say, Colin. It's 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 really just general visibility because the houses are on the intersection. I was think I was thinking if if we're digging up the intersection, now is a good time for perhaps turning lane or widening or perhaps changing the tree of sidewalk. Or you're correct, there's very little we can do. But because of the layout of the houses. But nevertheless, Colin, thank you for your explanation, given that it's a sewage project that's going to be funded from sewer and water charges.
That's correct. Yeah, hundred percent sewer and water charges.
No further questions. Thank you, Colin.
Councilor Kittriss?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to follow up on what Counselor Foster was mentioning about site, I was wondering if Colin had had considered any in in those areas where it's it's quite dense. The houses are very close to the road and there's hills of mirrors on the roads. I've seen those in a couple of areas in municipalities.
Sorry, can you maybe clarify what you mean by the mirrors? Are you talking like?
Traffic mirrors, like when you come into an intersection and it's very, very close. You you see traffic on both sides. So you can, you know, like, you know, because sometimes when you just start a left turn on those roads, like somebody zipping up that hill on Proost.
Right. Okay, I think I see you like a an angled mirror that shows traffic one direction or the other, or maybe like a convex mirror.
Yeah, that's what I mean. Have we ever considered that?
We haven't. Yeah, I'd have to look into that one, to be honest. I've in my travels, maybe in other countries, I've seen them at driveways, right? Where you have a driveway entrance onto a busy road. And it's, I don't know if it's the homeowner or something that has put put one of those up. But I haven't seen too many around this area. But yeah, I'd have to look into that one, to be honest, if that's if that would be permitted or or not. So.
Okay, thanks, Mark. Page ten?
Hey, page ten, we're into the Water Capital Project. So just mention that like the wastewater, these projects under the Water Works System are funded from water rates and and or development charges. So there should be no tax-supported funding for any of these Water Works projects. So I'll just open it for questions.
Councilor Foster?
No questions, Your Worship. Thank you.
Councilor Van Lewin?
No questions on this.
Councilor McQueen?
Thank you. I don't have any question on this page either, but you missed my hand on the last page. I did have a question. I didn't get it. I missed it when I it was my turn.
Yeah, sorry about that. Go ahead.
It's okay. It had to do, I saw a couple of line items there, Colin, I guess, on odor control at the wastewater treatment plants. And there has been a fair amount of complaints about the odor control at O'Brien Park. And I'm just wondering if that is part of what is being funded for this coming year?
Yeah, through through Mary Lynton to Councilor McQueen. So yeah, we've got, there's two, I guess, odor-related capital projects listed on the on the wastewater side. We have the odor control system, the biorem system at the Alora Wastewater Treatment Plant. Is so the the odor control media that forms part of the treatment system requires replacement. So but so that's that's twenty twenty one dash zero six six. And then two up from that, twenty twenty one dash zero six four is is implementing a full-scale odor treatment system at the Clyde Street Sewer Pumping Station. So we have that in for for twenty twenty two. We're completing some some testing, some pilot testing at the station currently just to see what what the right type of odor treatment unit will be. And and also we have some interim measures, odor treatment measures in place as well, controlling some of our our air cycle volumes through the station and some some carbon filters in place as well. So so we have some interim measures in place at the station. But then we also have plans to do a larger capital project, capital improvement at that station to address odors.
Councilor Dunn's more? Councilor McCray?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. Thanks. On to page eleven, Mark.
Okay, nothing to point out here, but this page will finish off all the Water Works Capital Projects. So I'll just open up for questions.
Councilor McCray?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Councilor Dunn's more? Page eleven. Councilor Kittriss, page eleven?
I do have some questions about the wells. There's several here, F two and F seven. I was just wondering what exactly, like, where are we at with those projects? And is this the completion of that projects? Or the beginning of those?
Yeah, through through Mary Lynton. So so this is the continuation of for F two. We'll start we'll start with that one. So we were just getting getting rolling on that project, preparing to drill the test well early in the spring next year. And and so the additional funding there would be used for essentially implementing the project. We're looking at a larger a larger treatment building to to house the chlorine treatment system and likely a new chlorine contact chamber at that location. And so in likely, like I said, a new a new treatment building. So that's what those that funding is is allocated for there. So really, we're we're get just getting rolling on that project. And the one, just a few lines above it for Fergus Well F seven filtration. So that's a a top up of the an existing account, looking at a like a green sand filter to remove iron and as well as manganese in the raw water that comes from well F seven. And that was just on on B line. And and so so as we've gone through the design phase, we're we're just revising estimates this year with the plan to tender and and construct that that filter treatment system next year.
Thanks, Colin. Follow on, Councilor Kittriss?
Thank you, Mayor. So when those those are done, will we have the water capacity for the growth? Like, will that be the the first phase that we had for our water study like? And we'll be up to capacity?
You know, through through Mary Lynton, yeah, I know the the projects identified to service future growth. There's, I forget the number of them listed, but there's there's quite a few in the in the Water Supply Master Plan. And this is this is the first phase for F two is optimizing our existing wells. We've also have a project for F five optimization as well. And but then there's also this the groundwater exploration program, looking at at new sources kind of outside of the serviced area and establishing new wells to service growth. And those are a little further up near the top of the page. So twenty twenty dash zero zero eight dash zero zero nine are some of those new well locations. So so every every year, we've got kind of projects embedded in the in the ten-year capital to continue to expand the capacity of the system. In terms of the F seven isn't is 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 not an expansion. It's it's a treatment system. So basically, we're dealing with like a water quality issue at F seven. It's getting starting the concentrations of iron are starting to creep up. And to the point where we're we do require treatment to remove that iron from the from the water. So so hopefully that clarifies it.
Councilor McQueen?
I have nothing on this page.
Councilor Van Lewin?
No, nothing on this page.
Councilor Foster?
No questions. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Counselors. On to page twelve.
Okay, page twelve is we're getting into parks and recreation projects. So I'll just open it up to questions.
Questions from council? Just let you know, we have Matt Tucker here representing this department. So he can answer your questions. Also have our fire chief here, Chief Patton, to answer whatever questions you have in his section. Councilor Foster?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for Matt Tucker. Matt, early in this term of council, a consortium of sports groups came to council discussing the need to turf the the need for a turf facility generally. And I'm referring to item twenty fourteen sixty four. Replacing the Alora Arena, I just wondered, Matt, is there been any developments on that consortium? I recall there were three sports groups, soccer, rugby, and lacrosse, I believe. And I just wondered if you can give me an update as it relates to item twenty fourteen fifty four. My second question, Matt, is we're at a million that replace the playing surface. Where is the point where it would make sense to Twin Light Arena? And perhaps keep it as a turf facility only?
Okay, through you, Mary Lynton. Just that that group, we've we did chat with them through CSAC. And there is a subcommittee that was formed. It was formed earlier in the year. Things have sort of been shelved due to due to the pandemic we're in. It does. It does get brought up and and has been brought up just at the recent CSAC meeting. And there hasn't been any movement on that. I know talking with the lead, he's hoping just to get things rolling again here in the near future. In for your second question. I guess the costing would be the biggest, the biggest factor, looking at a new ice facility. We'd probably be, you know, if we're looking at twinning a facility, I I would say we're looking more in the upwards of probably ten to twelve million. probably, um, ten to twelve million dollars to twin, say, the Alora Community Center. Um, so this, um, the retrofit here, um, would typically, the, the one-point-three would just be for the floor. Um, new boards and, uh, looking at, um, refrigeration as well.
I know Andy wanted to add that to your comments there, Matt.
Yeah, just, uh, through you, Mayor. Uh, thanks, Matt. Um, just a reminder to council and to Council Foster's, uh, point that, uh, earlier this year, uh, we did have, and we have made an application through the ICIP uh, for a major renovation, uh, to about five million dollars for the, uh, Laura Community Center, which would upgrade the arena, upgrade change rooms, the community center, uh, area space, uh, and bring, uh, up to AOD compliance. Uh, we're still waiting to hear that. Uh, they have not made any announcements at this stage, uh, but we are hoping, uh, that, uh, we will be successful in receiving that grant. So, uh, the floor would be part of that, uh, grant. And, uh, we would have to ensure our funding would continue to that. And that was council's commitment when we approved that application to the federal and provincial governments.
Following, Ca- Council Foster?
Thank you, Mayor. My question for Andy, uh, Andy, if I'm understanding correctly, if, at that funding, then, uh, it's, it is, uh, possible that we would twin the Alora Arena, is that correct? And, and, and furthermore, Andy, the reason I'm asking is lacrosse is heading towards, uh, box lacrosse is heading towards turf, uh, number one. The major leagues play on turf. Secondly, um, other groups need and would like to have a turf facility. The, the facility at Martin is very, very well-used. And even thirdly, just this week, uh, I was approached by, uh, three different seniors on three different occasions, all of whom go to Martin to just simply walk in, on an indoor turf facility. And so I, I do believe there is, uh, can, why need for, uh, uh, turf, a turf, uh, facility for winter, uh, playing sports in the wintertime in an enclosed facility. And, uh, my concern, I guess, is that it would make perfect sense as we grow and as, uh, because of the deep roots of lacrosse, to have a turf facility. And, um, and this is the, now that it needs, uh, the chilling replaced, it's the perfect time to, at least to consider it. So I'm wondering, Andy, if you can explain maybe more fulsomely what, what it would mean if we did get that funding?
Through you, Mayor. Um, as we've, uh, described to council before, uh, we do have a feasibility study going with the organizations that Matt mentioned, uh, to look at a full-scale, uh, indoor track, uh, training facility uh, that would meet the purposes that, uh, you speak about. Uh, the, uh, proposal that, uh, we sent in to the federal and provincial government for approval, uh, for funding, uh, was not a twinning, uh, but it was a re, uh, redevelopment, uh, upgrading of the existing facility and to meet, uh, today's needs. Um, as all of you know, this facility was built in nineteen seventy and has had no, it's a little, uh, renovations other than, um, a few here and there. Um, so it is in needing, uh, change rooms, washrooms, compressor room. Um, we've looked at the ceiling height within the community center, if I recall. Um, so that proposal, uh, I think we brought that back to council. I think it was eight, May or June of this year as part of the infrastructure funding. Uh, and Pat did provide a wholesome report of some concepts for that at that stage.
Council Van Loon?
Thanks. Oh, there goes my screen. Um, the, I noticed there was a line item there speaking about, um, sprinkler system. Or there it is, thanks. Uh, sprinkler system for the Fergus Grand Theater. Is there none there now at this point? Or is it an upgrade to the system?
There is no sprinkler system, um, within the theater at all.
Yeah, okay. And I, and I know already, I was told if it was, uh, if it's on here, it's, it's something new. Uh, is this a concern? Is this a safety issue that we should be, uh, looking at? Cause we have it, you know, six years out. Just curious.
Um, through you, Mayor. Then, um, I, and maybe Brad can jump in, uh, with this one as well. But, um, right now with, um, the occup- occupancy limits, I think, um, we're all, we're okay. Um, without a, a sprinkler, uh, system, but, um, being at a public building, I think, um, that need is there. Um, I'm wondering if Brad, uh, could expand on that for me?
Brad, did you want to expand on that?
Uh, sure. Uh, through you, Mayor, uh, very big proponent of sprinkler systems. Uh, haven't lost a building with a sprinkler system yet. Um, highly recommended, not required, uh, especially in older buildings, uh, where they may not have the other, uh, fire prevention features built into them as required. Uh, like I said, in newer buildings, but, uh, certainly a great idea.
Council McQueen?
No questions on this one.
Council Kitteris?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I have several questions on this page. Um, my first question is, uh, the Center Wellington Sportsplex Hall retrofit for multiple, what exactly is that going to be? Second question is, um, the Ferg, I had the, for the Fergus Grand Theater about the sprinkler system. And I would, since, uh, that was asked already, I'm just wondering, um, I have a sprinkler system in my building. Um, and I'm just wondering if we should maybe move that one forward. Um, also, just for the Fergus Grand Theater, I, I don't know whether we, we talk about the operations part of it in terms of the cost and the, uh, revenues of it. Will we be talking about that later? Uh, I just need to answer that, cause I'll ask that question later. And then the last one-
Sorry, let's just cover that off now. Um, that'll be in the operating budget. Um, we're sticking to the capital budget right now.
Okay. Go ahead. Um, and the last question I have is the future parkland development sixteen hect acres. Is that DC-funded?
Do you want to go, um, talk about the DC-funded piece first? Yeah, Dan?
Aaron, who, yeah, Dan and Mark could answer that. That would be great.
Yeah, uh, thanks, Mary Linton. Yes, the, um, the future parkland development is development charge funded. So that's not the acquisition of parkland. That's the, the future development of parkland.
Turn it to Andy for the other question.
Yeah, I think Council Kitteris, your first question with regard to the community halls. Uh, maybe recall, uh, when Brian was our, uh, director, uh, a few years ago, uh, we're seeing quite a bit of decline within our rentals, uh, at our community halls. That's part of the proposal of the, uh, grant for the ECC to make it more multifunctional, uh, and ability for training. Um, so this would be a revision to the Center Wellington Community Hall, uh, to look at ways to make it more appropriate for other uses than just, uh, banquets or, or for now, we have a lot more pickleball going to it. So just making it a little more user-friendly so that, uh, the sports that are using those and renting that facility would be more accommodative.
And just to remind council that a lot of, um, these, uh, budget items are right out of our parks and, uh, master plan. So that's when we went and did, uh, considerable community, uh, engagement and did a lot of demographic information. So this isn't just finding its way into ten-year, uh, capital forecast. It's coming straight out of our master plan. That was approved by council as well. Council Dunsmore?
Yeah, uh, I'd like to talk about the, uh, the theater. And I, I do like council, Councilor Kitteris's idea that the sprinkler system being moved forward. Since we've got the theater closed, uh, for COVID reasons, we're not using it or selling space in it. It would now be the time to move it forward and to get it done. So, um, this won't be the appropriate time. I know you're saving motions for the, the end, uh, your worship, and I'd be more than happy to support a motion in that regard.
Okay, we'll make sure that that's added to the list. Council Dunsmore? Council McCray?
I echo, uh, Council, um, Kitteris and Dunsmore's concerns about the sprinkler system. So we'll wait for that to come up later.
Okay, thanks. Uh, that's, uh, page twelve. Moving on to page thirteen, Mark.
Okay, page thirteen, we just finished off the, uh, parks and recreation area. And then we get into the vehicle replacement, which I'll just mention now, it's best to talk about the vehicle and equipment replacement when we get to the continuity schedules. It start on page twenty-six in the agenda package, which is a, uh, attachment D. Um, there's full schedules, uh, there that, um, show all the replacements, all the replacement items of, the replacement balances that find their way into the ten-year forecast are just the bottom line, uh, totals for each of the departments. Um, so it's better to talk about them when we get to the actual, uh, full schedules. So I'll just open up for questions on the, um, on the, the remaining parks and recreation projects on this page.
Okay, so the parks and recreation related aspects of, uh, page thirteen. Council McCray?
I have no questions on this page.
Council Dunsmore? Council Kitteris? Council McQueen?
I have questions.
Council Kitteris?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, for the Bissell Park ref- refrigeration system, I thought there was a McDonald fund, uh, monies for that, and that was scheduled earlier. And I'm just wondering why it's out so far. That's my first question. Second question is about the acquisition of green space. And where exactly is that, is there a specific location for that? And, uh, how much space are we thinking of acquiring? Now, I'd like to actually go back because I did ask the question about the DC charges for the sixteen hect acres. Um, where is it in the budget for the acquisition of that land?
So through you, uh, Mary Linton, uh, with regards to the acquisition, uh, a location has not been identified, um, as of yet. Uh, we're still looking at those opportunities and land, uh, through the community as development occurs. Uh, with regards to the DC, that is as subdivisions come on, uh, in developing those lands. So those will be subject, subdivision-driven as to, uh, how they're developed and where they're developed, uh, through the subdivision planning approval process. So that's funding in order to assist with those park developments. And then, uh, I think your last one with regards to the Bissell Park and refrigeration, the refrigeration system was not part of the McDonald funding. If you recall, when the group came forward, um, they were working with the ICE, uh, developer. Uh, they will be putting in the, uh, flooring system and the piping system to allow for the ice to be refrigerated. However, that was not included in their proposal or within the funding. Uh, it was discussed that it would be nice to have that, uh, completed a few years after. Um, so that's why the allocations there is and actually to purchase the refrigeration system. So the ice could be run, uh, for a longer part of the season, depending on the wintertime.
Council Kitteris, follow on?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I have some other questions about the dedicated youth space and the indoor turf training facility um, at five million dollars. Are those just on there because they're, um, just, uh, if the, like, we, we don't really know what we're going to be doing on those? The last thing I have a question is about the urban forestry. And I wanted to know how much of that funding is wages?
So I think that's, I'll, uh, mention the first thing. Um, again, all these, uh, items related to parks and rec are straight out of our, uh, Parks Recreation and Culture Master Plan. So, um, that's where you see the need for all these, these, um, projects. It's come right out of that council-approved document. So we're just slotting them in the, in the years that make sense from a budget perspective. I'll turn it over to Andy as far as the urban forestry question.
Yeah, um, my apologies, uh, Council Kitteris. We don't have, I don't have those numbers in front of us, staffing where they're planting. Um, I know Matthew, uh, does have, uh, uh, a re, um, some information with regards to that. So, um, I will ask him to provide that and we will can, send it out to council, um, after this meeting.
Council McQueen?
Thanks. I just, uh, quick question on the two new greenhouses. Are they both, are, are they additional greenhouses and, and, and both going in at the, uh, Swarthlex?
Matt?
Yeah, through you, Marilyn. Yes, those are, um, new, uh, new greenhouses. And I, we'll, we'll be looking at, uh, putting them beside our current greenhouses. Right now, um, our two greenhouses are at capacity. And, uh, we are currently outsourcing for our beautification program in our downtowns.
I just wanted to make a comment about the com, the, um, feedback that I've received about, uh, the baskets around town. Um, I had a lot of good feedback, uh, in both Ferguson and Laura for all the baskets and all the plants that have been brought around town. And, uh, it's a good testimony to needing the facilities to, to grow all those plants and to store those plants. Um, cause I think it is really beautifying the town. So, um, I think that's, that's a project that is, uh, getting a lot of, uh, appreciation from residents and businesses in the area. Um, where were we again? Um, oh, Council McQueen, um, does that answer your question? Yep, Councilor Van Loon?
Um, Dan's got a screen off there, but, uh, try to find it back. Is it, it's called, uh, Major, where am I? Major Splashpads? Major Children Splashpad. Are there locations picked for that? Or is this just a placeholder again?
Through you, Marilyn. Yes, it's just a placeholder, holder. And, um, it was identified in the Parks Recreation Culture Master Plan. Um, I know, um, when we look at location, I, I would think that would, we've common sense, we would look at a location that would, um, probably, probably look at the north end of Fergus, um, just to, uh, spread things out.
Council Foster?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, two questions. Uh, first of all, regarding the uh, twenty-ten-one-five-three, my question would be for Andy. I guess first of all, Andy, that five million is probably a placeholder contingent on the funds, the funding you already, uh, described. Uh, previously, my question would be if, if we get that funding, uh, would that project go into twenty-twenty-one? And where would we put this facility? If we got the funding?
Right, through you, uh, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the funding that we have applied for is the renovation and upgrades to the Alora Community Center is not for the indoor, the indoor training turf facility. Um, both the indoor training facility and the dedicated use space, spaces were, um, as the mayor mentioned previously, um, noted within the Parks and Rec Master Plan. Um, so until the feasibility study is completed for the indoor turf facility, we've just allocated those, uh, fundings in, uh, year ten. And through the study, then we will identify locations, size, what the, uh, true cost of that building will be as well as a business plan. And what's the financials for that building as well?
Council Kitteris?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just want to follow up, um, with the CAO. For the urban forestry, do I need to make a motion in this meeting for that? Um, and have a second? Cause that's sort of what I understood at the beginning of this meeting for information. Is that how we're supposed to be doing this? Cause I, I just want to make sure that, um, I can get that information, uh, after the meeting. And I'm just wondering when that could be done, uh, so I can get that information.
Yeah, I'll let, uh, our letter C.O. talk to that.
Yes, this is information that, uh, our staff are already working on. Yes, this is information that our staff are already working on. My apologies, just with the pad off due to personal reasons. We didn't get that here today. So that is material that we're happy to provide to all of council in the next few days with working through Matthew.
Thank you. Okay, okay, Mark, on to 14.
Okay, remaining pages of, I guess the pages 13, 14, and 15 are essentially the vehicle and equipment replacement schedules. As I mentioned earlier, it's probably best to deal with those when we get to attachment B, which begins on page 26. And then on page 15, the very last page of the 10 year, Dan, you can turn to that. So the grand totals there on page 61, which is attachment, second here. It's attachment E. It'll go over all of the external internal sources of funding for all the projects in a, in a summary format. That's typically provided in the budget book. I think that's it to it for attachment B, the 10 year capital forecast. So Dan, if you want to go to attachment C. Okay, so now we're narrowing down into more detail that was provided in the 10 year forecast. So this is the bridge plan here. This should look very familiar to you. We went over this on October 5th. There have been no changes at all to this. And it does, as I mentioned, it ties into the 10 year forecast on page 12 in the agenda package. It does assume $2.8 million is available from combined OCIF and the dedicated capital levy monies. For all 10 years in the spreadsheet, there was discussion last meeting about including assessment growth. Since that meeting, we've decided not to include assessment growth in the dedicated capital levy for 2021. But we will bring it back for discussion for the 2022 budget. So I don't know, Dan, if you can move your cursor there just to the right where we've got the, I'm sorry, that's my cursor. If you can move down to the dedicated capital levy and OSEF funding allocation amounts there of 1 million, yeah, right there. So if you sum up that number and the number right below it, you'll get to 2.8 million. Okay, and you'll see that number is carried all the way across. So we've assumed 2.8 million in combined OSEF and DCL monies. So at this point, I think I'll just open it for questions. As I mentioned before, this is exactly the same as the one that we discussed at the October 5th meeting.
So Mark, you're asking for questions regarding the dedicated capital levy and OSEF funding preliminary draft.
It's basically this document in general really is what questions are about.
Okay, so anything related to this document in, in general is open for questions, comments. Okay, Counselor, Counselor McCray?
Thank you, Marilyn. I just want to share with council. This past weekend, I received phone calls from several residents on Noah Road. Just expressing concern that with their bridges closed since 2016. They're asking if we can stick to the schedule shown here that we will be replacing those bridges, hopefully 2023. But I see that they've moved to 2023 and 2024. Previously from 2018 to today, they showed the bridges being completed in 2023. So I'm just requesting on their behalf that if we could stick to the schedule going forward so that they can plan on having these bridges open.
Thanks, Counselor McCray. Counselor Dunsmore? Counselor Kitteris?
I have no questions on this page.
So this is the whole rest of the document?
No, I have questions for the rest of the document. I thought you were on attachment C, the major bridges, which is on the screen.
Yeah, no, mentioned that this major bridges, but also the rest of the document, document that goes into a lot more detail on, on the different capital projects. So it's open, any, anything that we haven't talked about is now open for discussion. I'll come back to you. Counselor McQueen?
Thank you. I just a couple of questions from Colin and when we were through this before, I hadn't looked at last year's plan, I guess. But there's a couple of the, well, all of the bridges that scheduled this year, basically, and in the near future. For instance, for 4WG, it was projected at $540,000 and it's now 1.3 million. And I understand that the engineering work has now been completed. But that seems like a, a huge jump for a covert replacement. And I, I'm, I'm finding covert replacements overall to be more expensive than one would assume, as I did on fourth line covert replacement a few years back, a couple of years back. But is there, are we replacing the culverts with full bridges? Is that what's happening there, Colin? Or is because it just seems to be a huge number for a covert replacement?
Yeah, through, through Mary Linton. So that's, you know, the cost of these, of these structures. We've got the EA's complete, as you mentioned, and we're just, we're just getting into the detailed design of the structure. And the EA has really identified the hydraulic opening, right? So, so they've looked at kind of the amount of water that needs to pass, pass through the structure. And, and so that's really driving a larger structure at that, that location. And, and when we look at these, you know, we, we, we do evaluate, we consider culverts. And we put them in whenever we can, whenever it's suitable, wherever it makes sense. Precast elements that we can bring into the site as much as possible certainly does, does save costs. And so, so we try to do that whenever possible. But in some cases, it's not, it's not feasible or it is cheaper or less expensive to, to do a structure with abutments. And, and beams or girders. And in this case, again, this is our, our latest estimate, which is based on, on the EA. So the environmental assessment, estimate. It's, it might be a little on the high side in terms of the estimate. But, you know, we're, we're in the design process. You know, we, we do like to have a little bit of buffer, just in case we get into some, maybe there's a property issue or an easement or something that we need to address throughout the process. But yeah, we're certainly hoping that once we go out for tender and we do tender this, we're, we're well within budget. I think we, we carried very, very lean budgets previously and, and we did get burned a couple of times to put it a little bit crudely. But, you know, we, we do want to, to do, we do select kind of the most cost effective structure. That's in compliance with, with the EA recommendation. So just to provide some, some background on, on those numbers. So, so the example, the, the structure that we just completed on, on on third line in Pilkington, you know, we were, we were well within budget on that one. And, you know, we're hoping to be within the same, same situation in this case as well. But, you know, given a, given year with, with COVID and construction demand on contractors, it's hard to gauge kind of where that pricing is going to be from year to year. And so we've, we've estimated a little on the conservative side.
Colin, just to, just to add to your comments there, that is one of the reasons that we decided to go out and get engineering, detailed engineering work done the year before these bridge, these bridge projects are due to be completed. So that we had better estimates when we went out to tender, correct?
That's correct. That's correct. Yeah, absolutely. So, so that's why for, for 24WG, the next one in the line there. So that's, that's the plan to progress the detailed design of that one. And, and really unlock in the estimates prior to going to tender. And so, so we're a little bit behind due to the delays in getting the EA completed for that one. And, and 4WG is, is a little bit in the same boat where we couldn't proceed with the detailed design and have it as far as long as, as we would have liked due to the part two order request. And I think it took, I think it was almost seven months to have that resolved. So, so we're at a, we're not at that detailed design level of estimate here. We're at, at that kind of EA phase estimate, which has a bit more uncertainty associated with it. And, and so there might be a bit, a bit more buffer. But we, we, we would, we would like to keep that buffer in there as we go into the detailed design phase and, and complete that this year.
Counselor McQueen, you had a follow on? Sorry, Counselor McQueen, you're still muted.
Thought I unmuted myself and I guess I hadn't, sorry. Just to follow on then Colin, I, I think you just answered the question. But for instance, for 24WG, we, you have 200, $200,000 in there, which I assume is the pre-engineering. And then, but the cost itself in 2022 has gone up almost a million dollars from where it was sitting last year. Is that just a safety thing? Or have you already got an estimate that says it's now 2.7 million dollars even before we have the engineering finished? And, and the next couple of bridges are also, you know, higher than they were a year ago. So I, I don't know what pre-engineering has been done or where we sit in the actual estimates, how close they are to being final estimates. Or are, are we still looking at preliminary estimates?
Yeah, through, through Mary Linton. Yeah, great, great question. So it, it depends on where the design is and, and where we are in that, that, what we would call the planning phase of the, of the capital project. So, you know, when we're at a very conceptual stage, you know, the uncertainty in the estimate can be quite large, right? When we're ready to go to tender and we have a, we know, know the project scope, we know exactly what we're doing. The, the range or the uncertainty with the estimate is quite small. And so, so it depends on the project. So yeah, so right now with 4WG and 24WG with the EA just wrapping up, really just in, what was that? I think we got the letter from Minister Urick. I think it was the end of August, I believe, resolving the part two order request. And so we're really basing this on that environmental assessment level of estimate for both of those projects. And so we were quite comfortable with the estimate for 4WG. And we have some work to do in 2021 to progress the detailed design, start getting into our permit applications. We know we're going to be, we're into red site day habitat. Once again, similar to a, a nearby bridge on side road 25, or sorry, side road 20, 27WG. So there's going to be some work to do to get our permits and approvals in place next year. And understand the scope of the project, the bridge component seems to be the relatively straightforward component of these projects. It's the, the approvals we need, whether it's from DFO, may have to do habitat compensation to, to appease DFO for in terms of red site dates, potential impacts. So these are things that we need to determine through this year, which will help us properly scope the project, properly understand what the expenses are going to be associated with construction and restoration of the site. And, and then that will, you know, allow us to refine that 2022 number.
Thanks, Colin. And then in addition to that, then going out to tender, it's a competitive process and we take the lowest compliant bid. But it's, that's dependent on market forces and, and cost and materials and all that kind of stuff. So sometimes we do see modifications to the price point at that point as well, right?
Yeah, for sure, for sure. Yeah, like our, our practice, we've really tried to get these, these structures out early in the year, which has worked well for us, you know, while the contractors are, are looking for work while the, before their plates are full with other projects. And they may not be as hungry for projects later on in the construction season. So, and so that approach is, has worked well for us over the last couple of years in terms of pricing. So, so yeah, it, it depends on what other kind of competing work is going on in, in the, I guess, the county, the, the greater, the southern, southwestern Ontario area as well.
Counselor Van Loon?
Thanks. No questions, just a comment. And it's more in regards to how we see these bridge projects progress and change. And I think that it, it really shows how difficult, as much as possible, we like to stay on target with when the bridges are put in. Kind of goes back to Counselor McCray. But sometimes these projects go up and down or they change prices and it really makes it hard, I find, when we read it to, to target something three years out and guarantee it's going to happen. So as much as possible, we, we should try it. We should try to stay on, on schedule. But when you see how the process goes from estimating for a 10 year capital or three years out to actual reality, it tends to change. So just something we should keep in mind. And I found helpful for me to keep in mind. So it's not as disappointing if something changes. Thanks.
Officer Foster?
Thank you, Mayor. My question is for Mark Brady, our manager of finance. Mark, you and I have both studied honors business admin at Wilford-Laurie University. We took the same program in accounting. The people in this community were told that the bridge levy was temporary and they were told it was 2%. Can you help me understand the bottom of this chart? The temporary levy is shown every year from 2020 to 2030. So it really isn't temporary. And secondly, total taxation of 14 million, 2% is 280,000. I see by this chart that the bridge levy is 12 or 13% rather than 2. Can you help me understand this discrepancy, Mark?
From what I recall, when this bridge levy was brought in, it was a 2% levy increase each year. The bridge levy and, and the, it was the increase that was temporary. This 2021 represents the final year of the increase. It's not that the levy just disappears. The levy is always going to be there. It's the increase stops. So you can see quite clearly, I believe, on the schedule here that it's, it is not increasing anymore. It stays at 1,528,441.
Did you want to add to that at all, Dan?
Yeah, thank you, Mary Linton. We show a slide every year in, in the budget process that shows the 2% increase in base taxation annually from 2015 to the current year. So it's a compounding 2% increase in base taxation, starting in 2015. And as Mark mentioned, 2021 will be the last increase. And, and just as Mark mentioned, it was communicated as a, a, an increase in base taxation. And the increase would, would cease in 2021 when we hit the combined funding of OSEF and dedicated capital levy of 2.8 million. So what Mark is saying is, is correct.
Yeah, and just as, just to throw a political piece in there. In the most recent election campaign, you were a member, Counselor Foster. I made that really clear that this is something that I was supportive of. And I've been very clear since day one that this is a 2% increase year over year. And that the increase would be reduced in 2021 and then the increase would be eliminated in 2022. So I don't think there was any confusion from people unless they're being confused by other people. That's the foster.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Dan and Mark. On the contrary, your worship, I've heard you clearly state that the levy will disappear. I've heard you clearly state that the levy is 2%. Now we're saying the rate of increase. So we're playing some games with the calculus here.
Sorry.
2% of, 2% of 14 million, your worship is 280,000. We've misled the public about this since day one. And I think it's quite unethical. And I think it's quite unethical.
Thanks for your feedback, Counselor Ketchus, we'll go back to you, I think we missed you last time.
I'd just like some clarification of the pages we're dealing with here.
Yeah, sorry, I'll before you go any further, I'll clarify that right now, we're we're finishing up attachment C. And then we're going to combine schedules D through E. And I know Dan and Mark have a couple of comments on schedules D through E, so we're just dealing specifically with attachment C right now. Okay, go ahead. Go ahead, Counselor Ketchus.
Does a is that just, are we just talking about page twenty five out of one thirty seven, it doesn't, it says page one of one? Is that all we're talking about right now, because I have a whole from page twenty seven to page. Sixty, which are the vehicle forecast ten year, I have some questions about that, so I just want to. Or if I were, is that included in what we're going to be asking about right now? Okay. The question I have.
Sorry, sorry, I I want to make sure we're clear, because I'll respond to that. We're dealing with attachment C right now, and then Mark and Dan will have a few comments on. Schedules D through E, and then I'll provide opportunities for counselors to ask questions about that.
I'm not going to ask any questions about attachment C, and I'll go to D and E.
Okay, sounds good, anything else on attachment C? Okay, Mark, Dan, I don't know how you want to tag team, but well, let's go to schedules D and E.
Okay, I I thought maybe what I could do here is just give an overall summary of the vehicles by department without going to each individual schedule, so this would. This would be a summary, I guess, of pages twenty six to thirty five, so this would encompass all of the. Vehicle replacements. So as I mentioned earlier, the total tax supported operating budget impact of the vehicle replacements, because as you can see from the schedule. On the bottom piece, or we've been saving up money for a number of years in anticipation of. Purchasing or replacing, you know, vehicles. So it's a twenty seven thousand dollar tax supported operating budget impact to twenty twenty one. And I thought what I do is just give you a very high level overview, so in in Public Works, there is a schedule that goes over all this, all the vehicles, Public Works owned and so forth, but. For twenty twenty one, we're looking at replacing one pickup truck. Two ton and a half ton trucks. A single axle dump truck and then some attachments for the ton and a half trucks, which would be blades and Sanders. For the parts and wreck department, there is scheduled to pick up trucks for replacement and a mower. For the fire department, they're scheduled to pick up trucks, which Dan will will refer to the the tender, which we require council's approval on and shortly. There's also, I believe it's a hundred thousand dollar refurbishment of the two thousand one aerial. Truck, which will, I believe, give us another five years before that truck needs to be replaced. And there are also environmental, so water wastewater vehicles, those are funded by water and wastewater rates, not tax supported. And there are a couple of. There's one large vehicle there, which is a flusher truck that's scheduled for replacement, there's also a van and a camera truck. So those are all of the vehicles that are scheduled for replacement for twenty twenty one. I'm not sure if there's any questions on those, or if you'd like me to go on and go over a brief summary of what's in the equipment replacement.
Yeah, I do equipment at the same time, Mark.
Okay, so equipment then begins on page thirty six is the summary, I'll just wait for Dan to call that up. And the equipment replacement ends on page. Page sixty. So again, what you're looking at here is the tax supported, so the opera, the tax support operating budget increase is fifteen thousand dollars. For twenty twenty one. And again, high level summary, I I just summarized the bigger items for IT, it's a phone system replacement is scheduled for twenty twenty one. Annual workstation replacements, so every year we do a refresh of of computers. I believe they're on a four or five year life. And then there's also some SCADA access switches for public works, there's some packers for graders. Due for replacement twenty twenty one and a float trailer. For fire, the major items are hydraulic equipment and bunker gear bunker gear washing machine. For parks and rec, there is a pool boiler and condenser replacement at the sportsplex. Also, the digital sign at the sportsplex is due for replacement. Protective netting at the E C C. Windows and siding at Bowwood Hall. There is re asphalting the tennis court at the sportsplex. Play structure replacement scheduled for Douglas Park in Bowwood. Ferry ferry or park in Fergus and Graham Park in Fergus. And there's also a top up to. Convert the rubber base or convert to a rubber base at O'Brien Park for ninety thousand dollars. And there's also listed for O'Brien Park, there a hundred dollar a hundred thousand dollars to finish the park replacement at that park. There's also some environmental items, I don't know, Dan, if you can quickly go to page fifty nine. The environmental items for equipment replacement, the schedule has been expanded significantly, it used to just be one page, now it's two. Staff in the environmental area have gone through trying to list more items for replacement, I envision the schedule probably becoming quite a bit bigger in the next few years as we finish. Our our asset management project. But the thing to keep in mind with water. With the environmental equipment replacement is it's funded from water and wastewater rates, so there's no taxation impact. And I think that, yeah, that should cover off all of the items. For the equipment and vehicle replacement. So just open it for questions.
Go ahead, Dan.
Just a quick follow up on on what Mark mentioned on the the fire pickup trucks, so we have a. A tender award included with this document. We originally had the two fire pickup trucks included in the replacement schedules for twenty twenty. At a total combined budget of seventy thousand dollars. You can see from the tender results in in the document, that would be sufficient to actually purchase the pickup trucks, but. Not enough funding is remaining to do the outfitting and the optional equipment that's required on the fire trucks, so we're. Proposing to counsel that these pickup trucks carry forward into the twenty twenty one replacement schedule. We've topped up the funding to be sufficient to to cover the tender costs, we've talked to the lowest cost. Proponent and and Barry Cullen has has agreed to hold their price until. The December council meeting where this could eventually be a passed by council. But the the tender award for the two pickup trucks is suggested to occur now in December. With payment and delivery in twenty twenty one, so it's. It's just a matter of taking advantage of the pricing that we have available now. And purchase the two pickup trucks and and allow for sufficient budget to equip the trucks and outfit the trucks as required. And include that as part of the twenty twenty one replacement schedule as shown in this document. So we'd be happy to take any questions on that, as well as any other questions on the vehicle and equipment schedules that Mark has has overviewed.
Okay, so just confirm, we're dealing with the two schedules now, D and E. Counselor Foster.
Thank you, Mayor, I asked this question already, but didn't get an answer, how many kilometers are on the two? Fire department pickup trucks, how many kilometers?
Through you, Mayor, the the unit in Alora is eighty five thousand, four hundred and forty as of January. First of twenty twenty of this year. And the one in Fergus is sixty three thousand, six hundred and six again of of January of this year.
As a faster following.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, so chief. Just to reiterate, one truck has sixty some thousand, one truck has eighty thousand kilometers, chief, that's not many kilometers. Is there? Any reason they couldn't be extended for? One or two more years, that's very, very few kilometers, my own personal vehicle is an oh nine with a hundred and ten. Why couldn't we extend them one more year, chief?
Through you, Mayor, our schedule, if you look at our vehicle equipment schedule in the bottom right hand corner. For the last many years has our estimate life use. The bottom has the trucks down, pickup trucks down as ten. The truck that's in the Fergus station is a two thousand and seven, it's already fourteen years old. And the one in Alora is a two thousand and three and it is twenty, it's eighteen years old. Dependability of these trucks is crucial to their service as well as their safety features in them. When trucks get to a certain age, we look at how reliable are they? What is it going to be the resale value, what changes has there been in safety features of the vehicles? We're right in line with departments across the province with the ten year sort of life cycle on these trucks. To get the most value of them. We're already starting to have breakdowns on them, my truck right now is downstairs on the apparatus floor in many pieces because the wiper arms. Failed on them last night, we can't have these trucks failing going to calls, it's not quite the same as maybe going to cut the grass or something. So dependability is a huge issue, you're absolutely right, I've had several vehicles with three hundred thousand miles on them. Would I want them as an emergency first response vehicle, probably not.
Thanks, Chief, Council Van Loon.
Thanks, Mayor. I think when it comes to the the trucks and everything, I think I want to be careful, I definitely feel like we should ask the question, can we extend some of these? These vehicles, but ask in the sense of have we considered this in in a policy aspect, which I know that staff have done. In the past, but we should consider a little more. Considering this past year, but I don't, I I want to caution that we don't get into kilometers and and conditions and that we don't get into the the weeds of it, because. It is a tendency of mine to want to hear it all, but then. Knowing that we could. A vehicle can change its its ability to continue in service based on a lot of factors, so. Maybe if you can. Have a a high level look at things and and let us know which units you think. More of a policy thing that if we said, hey, have we considered this? As a more stringent, that would be the direction I would ask staff and not get into the how many kilometers on that, and. So I appreciate if staff would look at it from that angle, thanks.
Andy.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Counselor Van Loon, that's exactly what we do year after year. As you heard Chief Patton talk about, we've set the policy of ten years for a vehicle. We do look at those when they come up, and if they're able to go another year or two years, we continue to do that until the point that we feel that there isn't the right liability. Or the financial to keep putting money into the vehicle, so many of our vehicles are already beyond the policy number that we look at. But we do look at that every year before we provide this budget to council to make sure that if there is not a need, that we can run another vehicle another year, we do do that.
Elsa McQueen.
Thank you. My question is, it pertains both to motor vehicles as well as IT equipment and. I guess those two in particular, and that is. And I know we've had this discussion before, and I can't remember the answer, to be honest. What do we do as far as trade in value, where does that money go? And how is it accounted for? And with IT, I don't believe we even resell it, do we? Is it just recycled or what happens with the IT equipment? I I wish I had a computer that was only four years old personally, but. But I mean, that's, they're all, they're still good computers and they should be usable.
Dan.
Thanks, Mary Linton, when it comes to. Vehicles and major equipment, if we end up selling or trading in. Various equipment and and vehicles, the the proceeds that we receive. Gets allocated to the replacement schedule, so we can use those proceeds for future purchases of vehicles and equipment. When it comes to IT and specifically the desktops and laptops, we don't. Dispose of the desktops and laptops after four years, they usually get recycled within the township, and what I mean by that is. We have a lot of situations where we need spare laptops that staff can use when their laptops break down. So we keep a number in as as spare laptops. We have some that are distributed to the the public works garages so that they can use them for. Filling out work orders. On top of that, we. We also have some that we keep on a spare for emergency management purposes, so so a lot of our laptops get used well beyond four years before we end up donating them.
Elsa McQueen, a follow on?
Who do they get donated to, Dan?
Maybe Andy can help me out with this, but I'm pretty sure we have a a policy on on donation, I I believe they go to schools if I'm not mistaken mistaken.
Yeah, I do believe it schools and other not for profit if we're able to do that.
Counselor Ketchus.
Oh, thank you, Mayor, I have a question, just for information generally, before I ask my questions, is. It was announced that there the tax. Funding for the vehicles for this year would be twenty seven thousand, that would be the additional that we needed for all those vehicles. But what's the equipment one for? Next year, what what's the tax funded extra that we need for equipment?
Mark.
Yeah, I think I did mention that, but I might not have, it's fifteen thousand dollars is the increase, so the total would be twenty seven fifteen forty two, forty, yeah, forty two.
Okay.
That's on the tax supported side.
Yes. Uh, thank you. I have a question. As to. So far in the discussion about the trucks, I do have concerns. My my daughter's a licensed mechanic and. Those trucks, even though they're old, being a low mileage like that, and and I'm sure that they were serviced. So that they're kept up, they would be perfectly fine for years. And so I'm just wondering, even though we have this schedule. They, I I just am concerned about adding taxes for these vehicle and equipment. Because some of this equipment is for the the gyms and, you know, some of those ones. Tables and etcetera, and I'm just wondering if we can just save that money. For this budget, so that's my first question, my second question is. Since this is a ten year forecast, as I went through this document, there were projected estimate increases. And I was wondering about. Isn't that just a an assumption that they that that everything will increase, because some things do not increase over time. And sometimes you can get, there's new equipment that's better, especially. In terms of computers and electronics and in some other equipment, like there's there's new stuff on the thing, it's actually cheaper. So I'm just wondering why. So I'm just wondering why there was this whole scale that from this year you increased the ten-year projection so that it was substantially more in the year ten? And isn't that just a sort of a budgeting kind of presumption? And I was wondering why you did that. I mean, it was a tremendous amount of work. I see this going through there. You must have just worked hours figuring out all the permutations of all these pieces of equipment projected to the future. And I'm just wondering, like, is that like, you know, it's a lot of work and I was just wondering, like, because it, there's an assumption there that they'll always increase at that rate over that time and there might not be cheaper.
Yeah, Dan?
Oh, thank you, Mary Lynton. We do make an assumption on inflation for both equipment and vehicles. When it comes to IT equipment, we assume zero percent inflation because that one changes so dramatically from year to year. We don't know what new technology is going to come out and in a lot of cases, IT-related equipment goes down in costs over time. We do, we don't just automatically assume that everything's going to go up at inflation from year to year. We reassess the cost of vehicles and the cost of equipment on an annual basis. We just use the inflationary assumption to make estimates for the next ten years based on what we know in this year. So it's not something we suggest will happen. It's just something we use from a planning perspective and we adjust it annually.
Councilor Dunsmore?
Yeah, I want to just reiterate, thank you to Dan and Mark and Andy and the senior management team who put together the asset management plan all those years ago. Because here you are putting money aside in reserves year after year and we're about to purchase one point six million, I think, in vehicles and the four hundred and sixty-four thousand in equipment. And the two amounts that we have to pay in the tax budget are forty-two K added together. So that prudent planning coming up to this is what's got us to the stage where the tax increase this year for equipment and for vehicles is fairly reasonable. And I would think if we could find a vehicle somewhere to take off, it might balance that out to net zero. But I would be very reluctant, no matter how low the kilometers are on fire equipment and fire service vehicles. If we have a ten-year replacement policy, one's at eighteen, one's at fourteen. Thank you for keeping them in the shape they are and Chief Patton, but it's time to replace them before we run into problem. And we end up getting sued because our equipment fails on the way to a fire. And that's, that's just not something I'm ever going to attach my name to. So I think you've done a prudent job. If we could find something in one of the other departments, a vehicle that could be put out and maybe this could come down, I would support that. The rest of it, I think you've done a great job in the asset management and it's come home to roost. So thank you.
Councilor McCray?
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I just want to echo Counselor Dunsmore's comments. I believe in terms of best practice, that staff are quite conscientious in managing our equipment and vehicles. You know, looking at life cycle versus dependency versus repair costs. So kudos to all of you. Thank you.
Okay, anything else on Schedule D or E? Anything new? Okay, Councilor Foster?
Thank you, Mayor. Question for the chief. Chief, both, it's my understanding, these are fire administration vehicles. They're mostly used to do fire inspections, to do fire department business. Do you ever take these trucks to a fire? Do you not ride on the pumper trucks?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. These two vehicles are actually emergency response vehicles, part of our suppression fleet. They're housed in the station used by the firefighters to respond to calls, tow boats, tow argo, personnel carriers. They're quite active in responses. They're not used by administration at all, actually.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, anything else on D and E before we move to the motions? Counselor Kettress?
Is part of this discussion page sixty-two, because I have a question on that?
Is page sixty-two part of Schedule's D and E?
I don't know. Not clear. I didn't hear you.
Go ahead and ask the question.
The question I have for page sixty-two is the corporate operations facility. And it's about the needs assessment report. And I was wondering when we were going to receive that? Because that was needed for the to go forward with these financing. I realize that you've made the notes that you're not projecting that right now, but it is still in this budget right now at five hundred thousand to go build that. And I'm, was, we've been asking about that and that's partly what my email was prior. And I asked about that at the previous October fifth meeting. So I'm just wondering about that. And I'm just wondering when we can receive that information and if I have to make a motion for that.
Andy?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. As we reported several times through the summer, this was one of our projects that through COVID, we have not been able to work on as quickly as we had hoped. We are getting back to that and we're anticipating that in the new year, we will be coming to council with a full report of all the various options that we've looked at, all the costings for the different options that we're looking at and also what it has cost us to date. So we will be reporting to that to council in the new year. And we are currently working through that and getting back to that project after dealing with all our COVID situation.
Counselor Kettress?
I guess I just need to ask, do I need to make a motion for this report? Or because we have been promised this before, so I'm just asking now, the chair, do I need to make a motion for that?
In a council meeting, our CEO just identified that in the new year, they're going to be coming with a report that's going to go to all council. So that's in the minutes. So no, no motion is required because it happened in the council meeting. And because nothing is going to be done in the interim, as per the CEO's comments, as soon as his staff go through and provide the information into a report, it's going to be provided to full council in the new year. So I don't think I added anything to what our CEO just mentioned, but I did so anyway. Counselor Foster?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Chief, for your clarity on the trucks. I think it's important that the firefighters have good equipment. And my questions in the regard, Chief, are simply about the value of those good new trucks. And so what I'm wondering, I think, both Chief and perhaps Colin Baker, is there not a way? First of all, Chief, perhaps you can tell me what trade-in values you were offered for the old trucks in the tender, but more importantly, I'm wondering if we can repurpose those two trucks, Chief, for use in parks and rec or perhaps on the roads department? You're quite right, Chief. The firemen need good equipment. Nevertheless, you've got two good trucks there that have lots of useful life in them. And I would like to see us be more innovative with our vehicles. And both those trucks are perfectly acceptable for towing a trailer with lawnmowers on it or patching potholes or getting equipment for the sportsplex, whatever the case might be. Is there a way we could repurpose those trucks, Chief? Thank you.
I'm going to let Andy speak to that. Yeah, I think our staff have figured that one out, Counselor Foster. I think that that's part of their jobs. But I'll let them explain.
Let's hear about it.
Can you not interrupt me? Did I interrupt you when you were speaking? Please, let's follow the procedural bylaw here. They will be speaking to it, but I can't imagine that this is something that they haven't thought through and have a very good response for. Andy, you take the lead on this.
Yeah, thank you through your mayor. Yes, Counselor Foster, we look at all those options from trade-in value to whether we can use the vehicle somewhere else. It's a balance between the value of the vehicle, how much trade-in we get and how much value that is to providing those vehicles in other locations. To even give you an example, we have used CW hydro vehicles in the past that they have no longer, we're trading in and use those in other operation areas. So we look at that across the organization.
Dan, do you want to add to that?
Yes, thank you, Mary Lynton. Just further to what Andy was mentioning, for this specific case, when we received the tender results, the trade-in values were somewhat low. So we had decided that the trucks would be used over the 2021 summer by Parks and Recreation and then sold at auction where we typically get a lot better price. So we're actually saving thousands of dollars of costs in Parks and Recreation by utilizing these trucks over the 2021 summer period. And then we're expecting a much higher trade-in value through auction rather than trading it in on the vehicle. So we went through all of this with both fire and Parks and Rec staff before we provided this implementation.
Okay, so I'm going to, we're going to go to the motions right now and I want to, I've been tracking, there's three that I see that came out of our discussion and I want to deal with each one deliberately before we get to our recommendation under five point one. The first one was introduced by Counselor Foster, calling for a moratorium of all vehicle replacements in 2021. So I'll let, don't worry, I'll let you speak to it. So I'll let you introduce that. And following Foster introducing that motion, if he still wants to do so, I wanted to ask staff about what the impacts would be because this is deeply into the operations right now. So I wanted to make sure that we had staff comment and then we'll see if there's a second or for that and then we'll have a discussion about it. So Counselor Foster, you wanted to move a motion on vehicle replacements still?
Thank you, Your Worship. Yes, I do wish to make the motion with a minor switch to what I proposed earlier. These vehicles for the fire department, I think we should go ahead and purchase them because the, first of all, they were proposed in 2020, but more importantly, the firefighters need good equipment. Chief has made a very good business case for them. Further to the past discussion there, I would like to see those in our fleet more than just for next summer. They've only got sixty K on them. I think we need to start being more innovative in how we manage our fleet. It's one of our main cost drivers. I
Are you putting any of this into the motion?
No, you're interrupting me, Your Worship. I'm not finished yet. There we go again. See?
So Counselor Foster, I'm chairing this meeting and please stick to the motion. We don't need a whole diatribe every time you speak. Explain what your motion is, then we can have discussion. I won't cut you off if you're, if you're being clear on what your motion is.
Vehicles are a cost driver in our operation and therefore I'm making the motion for a moratorium on vehicle purchases for one year. I note, for example, that there are eleven trucks in the sewer and water department alone. Presumably many of them have very low kilometers as well. I also note there is a proposal for a six hundred dollar sucker truck and we have two of them in our fleet. I would like to see some costing and innovation on the costs and benefits of contracting that out versus having our fleet ourselves. But nevertheless, Your Worship, my motion is a very specific one, a one-year moratorium on vehicle purchases because of the pandemic, because this is the year to show some leadership in restraining our costs. So I'm making that motion.
Thank you. So just to repeat, so to make sure that we know what we're voting on or talking to, a moratorium on all vehicle replacements with the exception of the two fire vehicles that were mentioned in our conversation before. That wasn't too hard. I want to turn it to either Dan or Mark because I know we have a, we've been pretty proactive when it comes to our vehicle replacement schedule to make sure that we're tracking stuff. So I want to get their comment on the impact of this before I turn it over for a second or in a discussion. Dan?
Thank you, Mary Lynton. So from a budgeting perspective, it means redoing the vehicle equipment replacement schedules to reflect the moratorium on vehicle and equipment replacements. I would be more concerned operationally what it means to our operations staff in terms of our, in terms of the implications of deferring this. Like I know, for example, in my department, there's a lot of IT-related needs identified for 2021 that are fairly critical and delaying something like the phone system replacement would, could have implications on the townships providing services. So I would, we can make the changes from a budget scheduling perspective. I'd be more concerned with the implications operationally.
Andy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, I think just the example of the fire trucks and as Dan explained, using the fire trucks through the next year with Parks and Rec and then reselling is just one of the examples that our staff have done throughout the organization to become efficient and be, look at the creativity of how we keep our costs down. We do not look at this as just looking to say, we have a one point six million dollar budget and how do we spend it? We look at each one of these vehicles and as a couple of councilors said, you know, we've gone through a lot of work on this. We look at each of these vehicles, each of the managers, supervisors and staff, look at all these pieces of equipment, all the vehicles, and if we're able to extend them a year, two years, three years, move vehicles around from one department to another, we're already doing that. And I think anything looking at deferring this would be an impact across the health and safety of our organization and various parts of the organization.
Okay, so we have a mover for this. Can I get a second there for this motion? Counselor Kettress, you're seconding it?
I'd like to make a friendly amendment if I could.
Just, I want to run that by your clerk just for a second. Is a friendly amendment okay for this? If it's okay with the person who moved it? But we do them as a convention though, right? So it's up to me. Okay. Okay, I'll allow you to make friendly amendment and see if it's okay with Counselor Foster.
I'd like to just sort of add the equipment tax funded to that. So you have, I understand the motion is for vehicle not to have any increases and that's twenty-seven thousand dollars. And then I would like to add the equipment too. So if that's okay.
No, that's not okay. That goes well beyond a friendly amendment. A friendly amendment is a change of word here or there. That's a completely different motion. So if you, if there was an opportunity where you wanted to provide that motion, we can do that, but we should deal with the vehicle one as is because that's a significant change. Are you going to still second the vehicle motion?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Discussion from council. Counselor McCray?
I have no comment.
Counselor Dunsmore? Counsel Dunsmore?
Yeah, this is, these are unprecedented times, and we're using a COVID crisis, a pandemic, to say we should stop spending money. We've got people in this community that work in uh, auto dealerships and people that need jobs, and it's the jobs of accounting of the governments in these times is to spend money, and that may frighten a few people, but that's our job. And it's completely irritating that we have spent years in strong fiscal management and put the money aside to purchase $1.6 million worth of vehicles, and it's going to cost us $27,000, because we've done our job. We've, they, they've maximized the use of the vehicles, they got the best money they could for them in in return, and now we need to purchase these vehicles. So, I say we go forward for it, and I'm against this motion.
Um. Counsel Kitchess?
Well, thank you, Mayor. Um. I am for this because, well, number one, um, the Dan had said that they would be able to do it. I think that uh, it's, it's, he, he said it would, wouldn't impact their fiscal doing the budget, and so they were able to do it. Operationally, I think that it, it is uh, feasible. Um, and I, it's not about our jobs as counselors, and we are in a budget, and adding $27,000 is not going to save the economy of, especially not the local economy, because they're bought out of town. And so, the, the arguments that we should be spending money, like, I find uh, um, that I, I do acknowledge that the uh, staff is, works very diligently and hard at doing these uh, budgets. But I believe that this needs to be shown to the taxpayers, that we do listen to them, that we are concerned. I always hear people like saying that they're tax fighters, or they're really concerned about stuff like that, but then when it comes to actually doing the budget, they always add more. And so, that's why I'm for it. I think it's feasible. I think it wouldn't hurt anything. And it's not about uh, the fire trucks, and that's my argument.
Counsel McQueen?
Um. I'm gonna fall off the fence one way or the other here in a minute, but I'm not sure yet which side. I, it although I really would, I really do want to see us aiming for for a zero-budget increase except for the um, surtax. Um. And this would contribute to that. I think at this point for us to make a blanket can't buy any more vehicles this year is going to have a serious impact that we haven't had time to discuss. What I would like to see instead is that if, if staff can come back and say to us, we sold our vehicles for this, or we repurposed it for this, and we saved X amount of dollars and et cetera, et cetera. And, because I believe you do all of the work you say you do, but we never see that result. And, and I've asked for this kind of thing before, if we if, if we're saving money by purchasing something, then let us see the savings, not just make it a comment in a meeting, and, and let us see the results at some point in the future. That's um, because the, the IT thing in particular bothers me, and we're not talking about it right now, but it's the same concept. It's just we have all these computers going in and out every four years, and um, if they're reused, then let us know that. I mean, keep keep counsel aware of where money is being spent, where money is being saved, and what what staff are doing to manage the resources of the township in that respect.
Counsel Val Luen?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, sounds, it sounds to me like sometimes counsel uh, likes the idea of hearing some good news stories as well as to how staff are working. Um, I think that uh, we know you're planning like uh, any corporation does, but sounds like maybe some of those good news stories should come back uh, to counsel. Um, in regards to uh, the motion, I think it has a um, a good feeling to it in the sense of, you know, to the public, hey, we hear you, we would, we don't want to spend the money, uh, we understand your um, the pain that not only the residents have gone through, but we also, uh, we, we are empathetic towards the cause. In the sense of um, the actual motion itself, and, and into the, the guts of the motion, a blanket statement or blanket um, reduction in spending for all vehicles, I think is, is irresponsible. We don't just spend this money because we want to boost the economy, uh, so we spend willy-nilly, but the money's spent because it's responsible um, at, at its time. Uh, so we have those 10-year capitals, we look at the well, I guess if you just listen to the discussion we had, there's a lot of thought and detail. Um, so, I'm, I'm not in favor of the motion, but, but I think that uh, I can understand the thought behind it. But we need to be responsible and ensure that the township continues to run and go forward. So, thanks for the opportunity to speak to it.
Yeah, I just a cou- a couple of comments um, for me. Um, I uh, completely agree that uh, we should do whatever we can as a council to um, encourage that we get as low as possible from a tax rate increase. Um, and I think we've provided uh, staff for that direction. I, I have a little problem with uh, kind of taking a line item and and saying we shouldn't have any increase in this line item. Uh, the reason I have an issue with it is, we're not the experts um, at vehicles replacement. Um, that's why we have our staff. Uh, you know, as elected, elected officials, we provide policy, we provide direction. We've done that, we've said, let's come in as low as possible. So, at the end of the day, if we feel like we have to um, cut things, uh, then let's do that to get to a certain, to get to a certain level when it comes to a budget. But just to go through an op- uh, a budget like this and take one item and say, let's cut that. Um, it, it suggests that we have an expertise in vehicle replacements that we don't have, and our staff have been working really hard at establishing a an asset management plan, which includes vehicles, which includes facilities, which includes all the assets of the township. Um, and we have to, we have to have a level of trust, we have to have a level of, of respect for that kind of work that went into that um, as a township, um, as a council. And if we have to um, change that, um, the, the point to change that is, is when we're doing an asset management plan, and when we direct staff in a certain way. I don't think taking one line out of, out of a budget would make for good decisions, uh, if we get in the habit of doing something like this. So, I wouldn't be in favor of, of this. Okay, I'm gonna, we, everybody's had an opportunity to speak to this. I'm gonna call this to question. Um, I, I'm gonna ask for a recorded vote, just because of the challenges that we've had um, with with uh, voting and people uh, thinking things freeze up. So, I'm gonna ask just, let's be safe and ask for recorder, recorder vote on this one. Okay, so it's been moved by Counsel Foster, seconded by Counsel Kitter, and I'll let our clerk um, go through recordable process. Opposed?
Counsel Foster?
In favor?
Counsel McElwain?
Opposed.
Counsel McCray?
Opposed.
Counsel Kitter?
I oppose this one.
Counsel Dunsmore?
Opposed.
And Marilyn?
Opposed? Okay, thanks, counselors. Um, do you have a point of order, Counsel Kitter?
I would like to make another motion that's uh, more modest than that motion.
Yeah, we'll get to that after we go through the other two, and then I'll ask you what yours is, okay? The next one that we had in the course of our discussion was um, something around
Yeah, sorry.
About the roads.
Yeah, no, I knew what it was. Um, I just have to get our clerk to turn her mic off, because I can't hear myself. There we go, that's better. Now I get some feedback here, and it's, it's uh, I hear myself too much in my own brain. Um, so the next one was related to uh, providing staff the direction to look for um, options for uh, road uh, treatments in our urban areas that are now gravel. Um, and I'm gonna, I'm, I'd, I'd like to, like, I know what that's all about, but I want to make sure I get the wording right, because I, I don't want it just to be because what I heard from Counsel McCray was not just about whether uh, a road in an urban setting needed to be paved, but other options beside being paved, right? So, I wanted to make sure that we directed staff to study all our urban roads that are currently gravel and provide options back to council. Is that fairly accurate to what you're looking for, Counsel McCray? Did you have anything that you wanted to add, uh, add before you move that?
Uh, well, it's actually um, Counsel Kitter's motion.
Okay.
But uh, what you, what you've clarified, I certainly, I, I'd look at different options of, other than gravel.
Okay. Counsel Kitter, could you uh, move? Would you move that?
Not as, not as you, I, I think the clarification that you said, I want to know what the options are for all the urban gravel roads, and, and them being on some sort of uh, schedule. Like, so it's more of a report, and then also the options for all those roads. And, and then, and I just wanted to, I think citizens that pay taxes just want to know what's gonna happen. So, if we, we've never take account of them as a ca- on a capital basis, then so that's sort of basically what I kind of would like.
Okay, so I want to get this, this right, because you, what you added there is not only the treatment of the roads, potential options for treating those roads, but also a schedule of when they could be done.
Right. A report, like, just that, like, because that's what people want to know. They want to know well, geez, okay, in eight years I could get it, or five, or whatever. So, that's what they kind of, that's the feedback I get.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay, so the, so what also has to go with that is the, is the accompanied cost of it. So, obviously, that would be something that was in the report. Um, look at treatment options for gravel urban roads and as, as a potential schedule and costing to move to those solutions.
Sure.
Does that work?
That does work.
Okay. And Counsel McCray, could you second that? Yes, okay. So, moved by Counsel Kitter, seconded by Counsel McCray, uh, discussion from counsel, Counsel Foster.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to speak in favor of the motion. Uh, I, I may want to propose a friendly amendment because I believe Counsel Kitter, you're referring uh, gravel roads in urban areas, but I believe you're also referring to Salem and Bellwood, and I'm wondering if we need that in there. Nevertheless, I'm okay with the motion as stated. I think it's important that we invest and get those roads up to modern standards in urban areas such as uh, Bellwood and Salem in particular. So, I'm, I'm, I'm in favor. I'm getting that information.
Okay, yeah, and I think that was the intent. Uh, obviously, that was the intent, Bellwood, Salem, anything that's in a, or a rural or urban setting would be included in this, right? Okay, I'm, uh, while we're speaking, and I'll get Carrie to email me a, a draft of it, just to make sure that when we uh, go to vote on this, it's very, very clear for everybody, but I think everybody has a conception order to speak to it. So, Counsel Val Luen?
Uh, I, I am in favor of this one. I, I think it'd be a good report for us to look at and see um, get some of these roads out of their gravel state. I believe Salem has a bunch as well. Um, one of the questions I do have for staff would be, is there like, is this something fairly easy to put together, or are you really gonna get into um, into the weeds there? Like, is it gonna take lots and lots of time? Um, I'm gonna assume that you probably know the condition of these roads and the cost per kilometer to, to do this anyway. So, I'm just, it's a question to staff. Thanks.
Paul, can you answer that?
Yeah, for sure. Uh, so, so, yeah, I, I, like, certainly we can identify a list of roads, you know, maybe present them in um, on a map, and uh, and then come up with some cost estimates based on, um, based on some recent tenders that we've seen um, and recent experience with, whether it be hot mix or, or like the surface treatment. So, yeah, I think uh, I think we could, you know, fairly quickly pull that, uh, pull that, pull that information together. Again, the, the, the schedule aspect is, is a little more concerning, because the, really the schedule aspect is uh, well, the 10-year capital forecast, which we're doing right now. So, um, in terms of where they would fall, you know, this is the discussion to be, this is the timing to have that discussion. So, either we defer that to next year or at a later time.
Andy?
Yeah, just uh, speaking to that point, uh, I, my understanding this is that this would be something to be working through in 2020 uh, to look at a 2021-year forecast. Uh, I think, uh, I see Counsel Kitter shaking his head, saying agreeing that this isn't something that we're gonna be able to make a decision on, um, before this year's budget. This is something that's gonna a plan, what's the cost, how do we start phasing that in over time, is something that we're gonna have to have a discussion with at council. So, I would suggest, you know, early part, kind of the first, second quarter of 2020, we can bring that report for, and then spend a few months discussing that.
Counsel Kitter?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yes, I, 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 it, it's a proposal for the future uh, of those uh, urban setting uh, roads that are gravel. So, it, it is exactly like the uh, CIO has mentioned. Um, I don't expect it to be done in January.
Counsel Dunsmore?
I'm in favor of this. I think it's a wise idea, and we should get the information.
Counsel McQueen, did I miss you?
Yes, you did, and yes, I'm in favor.
Okay, thanks, sorry about that. I know how you guys like it when I, I, when I uh, mix things up a bit. Counsel uh, McCray, uh, you, you're, you want to speak to it a little bit more?
Uh, thank you, Marilyn. I just want to say uh, thank you to Counsel Kitter for putting forward the motion.
Okay, so I'm gonna read what's here, because it, it, um, I just got something from uh, from our clerk, and I just modified it based on a little discussion here. So, before we uh, do a vote, um, I want to make sure that we know what we're uh, voting on. Uh, that counsel directs staff to study all urban gravel roads to be included in the 2022 budget and provide different options for upgrading the roads, and that a schedule of costing for operating grades be included. Are you okay with that, Counsel Kitter?
Does it say schedule on there?
Yeah, that a schedule for costing of upgrades be included.
Yes.
Okay. And are you okay to second that, Counsel McCray?
Yes.
Okay. Um, all in favor? And that is passed. Okay, I'll send that back to Carrie. Okay. Um, moving on to the next one, uh, moving the sprinkler system up for the Fergus Theatre. So, can, did I have a, did, who, who spoke to this again? I mean, everything's going into a Counsel Dunsmore, did you speak to this, or who?
I started to speak to it, and I think Counsel Kitter's mentioned it first. He, he uh, mentioned that he'd like to move it forward. I'm okay seconding your motion, Counsel Kitter. Uh, and what I'd like to put in there is something about, you know, getting back to us before we approve the budget, what that looks like fiscally as far as the tax increase goes, because I'm assuming it's an operating uh, budget thing, or is it a EC charges that we can pay for?
I don't know, Dan or Mark, do that project, was that any, did that have a DC component to it?
No, that's a good question, Mary Lynn. Anything related to culture is an ineligible service when it comes to development charges. So this is something that would be tax supported.
Okay. And so Counselor Kittriss, were you moving that we move up the sprinkler system to 2021?
No. I, I would like to move it up so that it could be funded, perhaps, with the OLG funds and not be tax, tax increase, but the OLG funds are limited and, but I still think that it's a necessary provision. We have it out, I think it's five years, and I would like to do it, I would like to have this actually moved to 2022. It's very late right now in 2021, and I would actually like to lower the, like, and have a, and because of the fiscal situation of COVID, I'd like to be a little bit more neutral. And I see that that might add a significant amount to the 2021, so it's more to move it to 2022.
Okay. And Counselor Dunsmore, would you second moving the sprinkler system up to 2022?
Yeah, I would consider that, yep.
Okay. Questions from, from Council, Counselor Foster?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of questions. Counselor Dunsmore made an excellent point, and that is to do the sprinkler system while the theater is closed. I'm also in favor of Counselor Kittriss's comment that we ought to fund it from OLG proceeds rather than taxation. So my question is to Dan or perhaps Mark, just going from memory on that sheet, I believe, can you just refresh my memory, Dan and Mark? What is the estimated cost of this project? And more importantly, could we do it in 2021 using OLG funds rather than taxation?
Yeah, go ahead, Dan.
I'll, I'll take a stab at Dan and fill in the blanks. It is in the budget right now in 2021 for $75,000. You may recall, though, from our last pre-budget meeting, we'd already allocated all the slots money and all the general capital reserve money and all the gas tax money to various projects. So if we were to move this project up to 2021, it would likely mean that we've got to move a project out of 2021. I just took a quick look. It looks like we can fit it into 2022. But 2021 would mean likely moving a, a project out at this point.
Yeah, I think we have to depend a little bit on staff when it comes to budget. You know, whether it's OLG or tax funded, it's all coming out of one pot, right? So if, you know, if we kind of have to leave that up to staff and to give us a recommendation. But the purpose of this motion is, I hear it is to move it up to 2022. Counselor Foster, follow up?
Thank you, Mayor. Question, I see Chief has just left. Perhaps Colin Baker, Chief Patton can help me understand how long, it'd be very approximate, but how long might it take to put in such a system? Chief, I'm, I'm wondering how long it might take to install a system like that, because of Counselor Dunsmore's very valid point that when the theater's closed, it's the perfect time to do it. How long would it take to install such a system roughly? Days, weeks, months?
Three, Mayor. It'd probably take about three weeks.
Andy?
I just wanted to caution council the fact that that is a very old building. We have old water lines, so there may be more to it than just adding installation of fire sprinkler system throughout the building, and we do have very different compartmental components with regards to the stage versus the front of house. So we would have to have someone come in and take a look at it and design it and tender it and things of that nature. So timing is not just the installation, it's the work kind of putting into it to get it ready to go.
Counselor Van Luin?
Thanks, Mayor. It's interesting, because I, I asked the question originally why it was six years out. And the staff must have had a reason why they put it at six years out, when they balance off their priorities versus risk versus needs and their, all their assessments. Because I imagine you don't just plop something out, six years out, if it was a high, high need. So I looked at staff and asked a question, what are we doing at this time to ensure it's a safe building? Do we meet the practices of safe building? Because I really don't want to push this thing forward just because we, we, we anticipate a safety concern from council level and then have it go through a very quick tender and design and everything, and if it comes in higher, I'd rather have it further out and be prepared. So if we're meeting our, our safety regulations today, then I would almost be more inclined to say, leave it where it is, let's not push it forward. And I, my, my question originally was, why was it there and have we considered it? Because it's a safety need. If you have considered it, I'd actually rather leave it there, especially because it's, whether it's OLG dollars or whether there's taxation, if you, if you spend OLG dollars, then you, you can't spend it on something else. I'd rather save the money and spend it elsewhere at this point, as long as we're still meeting our safety requirements. Thanks.
Andy? Through your worship, your worship, those are good points, Counselor Van Luin. As everyone knows, we've done significant amount of renovations to over several years back, I think it was 2008, 2009, and that was a major component. I remember coming here in 2006 and Tom will be walking me through the building, and we had a fire issue with regards to the furnaces in the basement. The first renovation pulled all of that out, and now all the HVAC systems are up on the roof with clear safety fire requirements. The new renovation, we did all the front of the house, met all the building and fire regulations. I do think, as Chief Patton said, the sprinkler would be very nice to have and make sure the building is far more safe. However, as we've looked at it, it is, was not our top priority in funding that we're looking moving forward.
Counselor McQuaid?
Counselor Van Luin's point is well taken, and I guess if it, if it truly is meeting safety requirements, then do we want to move it up? Possibly not. On the other hand, if there was a fire in the, in the building when it was crowded, with only one exit, is that, is it meeting safety requirements? So I, I know Brad said, we don't need it, but it's nice to have, and I, I feel the same way about the, the fire alarms in my house. I don't need it, but it's really nice to have it, just in case. That's, so I think I'm in favor of moving it up. I don't know if 2022 is the year for it or not, but moving it up certainly.
Counselor Kittriss?
Thank you, Mayor. I think this is a important issue. There's been some very good points made. One of the things is, when you have a sprinkler system, your insurance is less. It is definitely safer. And I think that we have made incredible amounts of investments into this theater. And I think the sprinkler system would maybe reduce any sort of damages that would happen and also possibly, you know, save lives. And, and so I think that it's a very important thing to move ahead. I don't think that it's, it can be done this year, and I'm more thinking of it just preparing for it. And as the CIO mentioned, that it is an old building, there might be some other different complications of just like a new industrial building, just whipping it in. So I, I think just having that time also will help get the best tender and the best plan for it. So that's why I, I do still support this. I think that that's, it should be moved. But I think that those considerations that perhaps it's just, it's not needed for safety reasons. It's always better to be safe than sorry.
Counselor Dunsmore?
I just wanted to correct Counselor McQuaid. There's four exits out of that theater. Two on either side, one at the back of the, the house, and then one at the front of the house where the ticket is. I just wanted to correct that, so people weren't in a panic.
Counselor McCray?
Thank you, Mary Lynn. Yes, I was just about to correct them as well, that there are four exits. I share Counselor Van Luin's concerns about, you know, if the due diligence has been done and staff feel that leaving it where it is, is appropriate, then I'm fine with that.
Counselor Dunsmore?
Yeah, we have the fire chief here, so why don't we just ask the question, is that building, that building is, is safe in your mind right now? Without a, without a sprinkler system?
That's a tough question to answer.
Sorry.
I just don't want to put you in a real awkward position. That's a tough question to answer. Obviously, it's not as safe as you want it to be, because it's in the 10-year forecast. So everybody thinks, everybody knows it has to be done. Is, you know, you can answer the question the way it was posed, or you can, you could answer the question about whether you would support it being moved up to 2022.
Why don't I just ask for his comments, and he can phrase him any way he wants?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, really somewhat excited and impressed that we're even having this conversation about sprinkler systems. It, it speaks a lot to council, and, and thank you very much for having this conversation about this building and probably other buildings. The theater meets all the minimum codes, probably a little bit more than the minimum codes. Sprinklers are a good idea. I don't believe there's any rush to it. And I would certainly agree that, as the CIO mentioned, maybe in 2021, 22, have the building reviewed, get a, a, a firm cost, and then proceed from there.
Okay, has everybody had the chance to speak to this? Yes, they have. Okay, so I have a, I'm, I'm gonna read the wording of a recommendation here, just to make sure that it's okay with the mover and the seconder. The council directs staff to include the replacement of the sprinkler system at the Fergus Grand Theater in the 2022 budget. Is that, is that okay with the mover and seconder? That's okay, Counselor Kittriss, Counselor Dunsmore? So moved and second? All, all in favor of, of that? Three opposed? And that is defeated. Okay, so that was all we had as far as the motions go. I know we're gonna get back to Counselor Kittriss's motion about the equipment. We have to do a bit of a time check right now. We have delegations coming at 5 o'clock, and we haven't even got through the first item on our agenda. We're going really deep here. So I'm not exactly sure. We have to make sure that we leave enough time to, to get a new Zoom call going. Everybody's got to get it off and go on to a new Zoom call, and we got to make sure that our delegations know what they're doing. We're just getting a break to get everything ready. Okay, so we need a break. So we have kind of a hard stop in, in five minutes. So if we can get through another motion in five minutes, or else we can just find another date to finish this off. Why don't we find another date to finish this off? We have so much to do yet. We're just gonna have to figure out how, how we get it done in time for the budget stuff. So let's, let's pause. Good discussion. We'll come back to where we left off. And we'll come back with the delegate, our delegations at 5 o'clock. And we'll come back with the delegate, our delegations at five o'clock. And we'll come back with the delegate, our delegations at five o'clock. I just don't want to put you in a real awkward position. That's a tough question to answer. Obviously, it's not as safe as you want it to be because it's in the tenure forecast. So everybody thinks, everybody knows it has to be done. Is, you know, you can answer the question the way it was posed, or you can, you could answer the question about whether you would support it being moved up to 2022.
Why don't I just ask for his comments and he can phrase him any way he wants?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, really somewhat excited and impressed that we're even having this conversation about sprinkler systems. It speaks a lot to counsel and thank you very much for having this conversation about this building and probably other buildings. The theater meets all the minimum codes, probably a little bit more than the minimum codes. Sprinklers are a good idea. I don't believe there's any rush to it. And I would certainly agree that as the C O mentioned, maybe in 2021, 22, have the building reviewed, get a firm cost and then proceed from there.
Okay, has everybody had the chance to speak to this? Yes, they have. Okay, so I have a, I'm going to read the wording of a recommendation here just to make sure that it's okay with the mover and the seconder. The council direct staff to include the replacement of the sprinkler system at the Fergus Grand Theater in the 2022 budget. Is that, is that okay with the mover and seconder? That's okay, Counselor Kittriss, Counselor Dunsborough. So moved in second. All in favor of that? Three opposed? And that is defeated. Okay, so that was all we had as far as the motions go. I know we're going to get back to Counselor Kittriss's motion about the equipment. We have to do a bit of a time check right now. We have delegations coming at five o'clock. And we haven't even got through the first item on our agenda. We're going really deep here. So I'm not exactly sure. We have to make sure that we leave enough time to to get a new Zoom call going. Everybody's got to get it off and go on to a new Zoom call. We got to make sure that our delegations know what they're doing. We just need a break to get everything ready. Okay, so we need a break. So we have kind of a hard stop in in five minutes. So if we can get through another motion in five minutes, or else we can just find another date to finish this off. Why don't we find another date to finish this off? We have so much to do yet. We're just going to have to figure out how how we get it done in time for the budget stuff. So let's, let's pause. Good discussion. We'll come back to where we left off. And we'll come back with the delegate, our delegations at five o'clock. Okay, it is five o'clock and we're getting back at it here. Welcome to all the delegations. First time we've done this with delegation at the budget meeting on Zoom. How exciting is that? So we've been, we've been meeting for the last couple hours here, but we're still good to go. So before we got into delegations, I just wanted to let counsel know a couple things. First, 5.1 today. Unfortunately, we're going to have to stay. That has to be, that has to be passed today in order for us to do what we need to do with our, with our trucks. So 5.1, we have to get a decision of counsel on today. I'm going to ask for somebody to move a deferral, the 5.4, the rates and fees to our December 14th meeting. And I'm going to also ask for somebody to put forward a motion to defer items 5.2 and items 5.3 to January 5th or budget meeting. So that's the way that we can deal with the things that we thought we were going to get through today. So can I get a, can I get somebody to move deferring 5.4 of the rates and fees to December 14th, please? Counselor McCray, seconded by Counselor Foster. All in favor of deferring that December 14th? Okay, that's carried. And can I get a move, a mover to defer 5.2 and 5.3? So 5.2 is a staffing strategy and 5.3 is a pre-budget report, the O G funding. Get it to move that to January 5th and we'll, and we'll deal with that at the beginning of the budget. Moved by Counselor Cray, seconded by Counselor Dunsborough. Any discussion about that? Is that what your waving hand means, Counselor Kittriss, as opposed to a still hand? Okay, now I know. Counselor Kittriss?
Yes, I would like to ask if, since that's going to be scheduled for January 5th, if that could be a closed portion of the budget meeting?
Well, there'd have to be a clear, a clear reason why. There's only a handful of things that you go in closed meeting for. So you'd have to explain why that was supposed to be a closed meeting.
I'd like to have it as a closed meeting because we are discussing staffing and costs and perhaps savings. And I think that's, there's some savings aspects that might be personal. So I think that that is appropriate.
Doesn't sound like it to me. Those are all open session items. Unless it's an identifiable individual. All those things have to be done in an open session.
Well, I would like to discuss the, in terms of those two staffing things, which is the economic development person. And I would like to also talk about the Grand River, no, the, the Grand Theater individual. And I would like to also talk about the urban forestry individual. So is that specific enough?
Yeah, that's specific enough. We do need a resolution of counsel to go into a closed meeting. And the notice would be fine since it's moving into January 15th. So you, if you're moving that that item be handled. And the reasoning would be end of recognizable individuals. How's the, how's that worded again, Carrie? Actually, can you just say it? Because now I can't even remember what you said.
It is section 239 B. That are closed to discuss personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or board employees.
So, so you're putting forward a motion that we go into closed session for that reason? Is that accurate, Counselor Kittriss?
In regard to budgeting, yes.
Well, that's not, that's not why we'd go into a closed session, though. The reason would Yeah, so we're directing, you're directing staff to go into closed session based on section.
Schedule a meeting.
Schedule a meeting.
Schedule a closed meeting. In accordance with 239.
Sorry, that direct staff to schedule a closed session meeting in accordance with 239, 1B of the news block.
Okay, are you removing that?
Yeah, if it, if it allows to discuss it in terms of budget, yes, sure.
Anybody get a second, anybody's going to second that? Any comment from members of the council? Okay, all in favor of that closed meeting? Opposed? And that is carried. We'll have a closed meeting on January 5th and our clerk will make sure all the proper notification is provided to the public. Okay, and now can I have a? Okay, so that's all taken care of. Thanks for that. We'll move on to our delegations now. Thanks for sticking with us. You saw a piece of counsel in action there. So the first delegation that we have is Michaela Campbell, administration administrator of the Alora B I A. Welcome, Michaela.
Hi, thank you. This is my first time. I just came on board as the administrative and communications coordinator in May. So at a very strange year for the B I A. So really different as far as what the year was anticipated to be and what it actually ended up being. We were still able to put some of our budget money to events like Starlight Shopping and Alora Licious, which was pre-pandemic, but a lot of the budget from this year was redirected to things like a shop local campaign and a stay safe campaign that we, we rolled out earlier in the year. And in, at the beginning of the pandemic, sort of May-June. For as far as what remains in the budget for this year, we still have two major projects, which are urns for either end of the walking bridge. And we also have bike racks. So we're hoping to sort of follow through with those early in the new year as far as that. One of the major or most successful initiatives we did this year was the weekend street closures. So that we found was very successful for the businesses. That started in June and it was supposed to end at the end of the summer, but we extended it to include the, to go until the end of Thanksgiving weekend. And I think anecdotally, it was very successful as far as ensuring our businesses operated in a safe and effective manner and also ensuring that restaurants were able to bring in more clientele by extending the, their seating out into the sidewalks and et cetera. It also was very effective in accommodating for what felt like a massive influx of tourists this summer, mostly from areas outside of Alora and Fergus or Centre Wellington and in part because of the limitations on travel internationally. But really, Alora has becoming an increasingly popular destination, I think, which is something that the B I A and looking at our budget moving forward is really trying to focus on promoting ourselves sort of outside of the region and in sort of a broader reach Toronto. There are a field. We're, we're very appreciative of everything that Dorothy Smith and the township and county did working with us to make those weekend street closures happen and helping to accommodate all of those changes. Most recently, we also had the street closures on for Starlight Shopping and that was to ensure safe physical distancing as well. And it's a bit of a different climate in the past few weeks and the change in weather and stuff. And I've put, we've put out a survey monkey or to see what the response to that was and how, how that initiative worked for, for them as well during that period for the local businesses, retailers and, and and restaurants. Since coming on board, a lot of the priority of the BIA has really just been to coordinate with township and public health and provide necessary information to the businesses. So they're operating in a safe manner according to, or in accordance with provincial mandates. But we've also really been trying to help coordinate and provide them with information on available financial support and funding opportunities that have arisen in response to the pandemic. And one of the biggest sort of funding initiatives has been the Digital Main Street Grant, which we've had the granting period closed November 30th. And we had at that point, the week prior, we had already had 45 businesses join that. And that was for a $2,500 grant to put towards online, sort of building your online presence and upgrading software and stuff. So, so that has been sort of a major initiative in the past few months is to help businesses go online and to provide their goods and services online and then, and to sort of diversify the ways in which they connect with their patrons. So that's felt like a very successful initiative. And that was funded by both the Ontario government and the OBIAA, which we are a member of. It just generally, obviously, the community has not remained unscathed by anything, but we've, we've had an increase in businesses move into Elora. So since January, there's been 10 new businesses that have opened up and in, on the other end, we've had, I think, three that have, have closed in the last few months. The biggest change is not the biggest change, but one of the changes we've done is we've changed, we've moved our AGM to November. So we are better coincide with the budgetary process for the township. So we've already held our, our AGM for this year and we've passed our 2021 operations budget. That was held November 2nd. And we also elected a new board because it was the end of the two-year term for most of the board members. And we have an almost entirely new board and it's increased from six to nine, which is the maximum. So that's really exciting. So we have a big group of people moving forward and excited to get going on things for next year. Our new cord, our new chairperson is McLean Han of the Evelyn and our vice chair is Jefferson Wild from the Porchlight and our treasurer is Jeffrey Wild from the Wild Tart. As far as the 2021 operations budget, it was approved by the membership with a 7% levy increase request. And that would increase our next year's budget by about 4,000. And the justification for this, on the one hand, is that Alora is really becoming, increasingly becoming a destination. And I think the budget of the BIA needs to accommodate that by sort of spend, putting more towards beautification, but also beefing up some of the events that we already have and late, late night Alora. And also putting that more towards promoting on a wider scale beyond the locals. So paid promotion in wider markets. And that's, that would sort of account for the increase in cost in next year's budget. One of the other major things that we're putting money towards in the upcoming year is the idea of promoting Alora as an inclusive and welcoming community. So one of our late night Aloras will be dedicated to Pride during the month of June. And we also have a major mural project that is in the works for next year as well. So, so that those sort of three areas would be where that increase in, in budget would go towards. And I think aside from that, we haven't had the first meeting of the new executive, but that will be happening in December. So looking forward to, to new ideas and how they're all going to, to, yeah, and continue to improve on, on an already great organization.
Great. Thanks very much, Michaela. I really appreciate yourself and the other volunteer positions on, on the board. I mean, I know you guys put in a ton of work and this was a real, real tough year. So I was glad to see the board working so closely with the township to make things work. I know it's been a real tough year and you guys have done a great job. So thanks for that and thanks for coming today. I'm going to turn it over to councillors. I want to turn it over to your council representative, Counselor McQuaid first for his comments and then any questions that the rest of the councillors have. So I'll turn it to you, Counselor McQuaid.
I don't really have a lot to add. Michaela has covered the results of the AGM and the, the budget already. I want to congratulate the, the board that have just retired for doing an excellent job in a tough year. And I think if anything, tourism was up this year, not down despite, despite the restrictions of COVID. And the, every business in Alora were wonderfully strict about enforcing the COVID restrictions. And that certainly helps everybody feel a lot safer. And then of course, the township and the county for allowing the street closures certainly helped everything as well. So it's been a great summer in many ways, but it's also been a challenging year overall because many of the businesses missed basically two full months of any business. And so they had to recover all of that loss during the summer as well as prepare for this winter. So they've, they've done a great job.
Thanks, Counselor McQuaid. And thanks for your representation on that board. Really appreciate you bringing the, those notices and that, that information back to council. Turning it over to questions from council. Any questions from council? I won't go around the room. I'll just go and take your hands up. Counselor Foster?
Thank you, Mayor. Michaela, thank you for that great report. I wondered if there's, there's probably two or perhaps three metrics I'd be interested in hearing from you anecdotally. And that would be amongst your membership generally. And I realize you can only speak generally. What are your members saying about things like loss of revenue in 2020? Profitability in 2020 and also any loss of employment amongst your members as a result of the pandemic? So in broad strokes, Michaela, I'm asking about sort of the impact on our members in downtown Alora as a result of the pandemic. Your comments would be appreciated.
I would say the biggest struggle is the restaurant owners. As Kirk said, the tourism this summer was up enormous amounts. There was a lot of visitors to Alora and it sounds, anecdotally, it sounds from the retail perspective that that has recovered quite nicely. And things like rent relief have been quite helpful for the retailers, for those property owners that have provided continued rent relief. The, yeah, overall, it's the restaurants that are struggling most. And especially now since the seating, it's, you know, even though there are some patios still open, it's quite, it's, there's fewer patrons for sure at the restaurants and, and trying to, and the limited capacity inside has been a real struggle.
Thanks, Michaela. Any other questions from council? Counselor Ketchus?
Well, thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to ask Michaela, it was a great report. I'd just like to ask Michaela about parking and having the roads, roads closed. Do you see that as a permanent strategy for the BIA?
I, I think the BIA would love to see these weekend road closures happen even beyond the sort of emergency situation. Now they saw a real benefit to it. I, it would, generally speaking, it would have to be as far as residents' response. I think those complaints and things, if there were many or any, would have been fielded by the township. So, but generally speaking, when I would walk around and deliver the letters about road closures and things, the, the response was, it was well received, I would say. But it definitely, there are a lot of logistical issues involved, especially with the reopening of the bridge. But I think moving forward, the BIA would definitely like to have this on their agenda to sort of move towards having weekend road closures, at least in the summer.
Anything else from council? Counselor Ketchus?
Um, I was wondering if the CIO could comment about that, like in terms of the roads open and as a strategy for the BIA? Like, is there any possibilities of that?
I'm all commenting on it first in my role as the county warden. As I mentioned, I'll be supporting downtown street closures at the county level as long as I'm there. Because I think it was, it was just fabulous. I thought it had a great feel. And we have to, we have to make sure that we address some of the parking issues. But overall, from what I've heard, it was well received. And I definitely think that this is something going forward that I'll be supportive of for sure. I'll let the CEO speak from a township perspective.
Thank you, Marilyn. Then through you, yes, we have already began discussions with the staff level at the county in looking at for 2021 summer closures for weekends. And also staff will be working to refine a patio policy. We kind of kept it by the fly this year, just making sure we can address all the needs of the restaurant owners. But we're going to be working that through with both the Fergus and Alora BIA and to have something more formally in place to make sure that we can support their businesses in 2021 as well.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much. Counselor McCray?
Thank you, Marilyn. I just wanted to add in my own comments that the road closures were a great success and I heard more positives about the roads being closed than negatives. So I'd certainly be in favor of continuing that again next year and even maybe considering through the winter too, if COVID continues to be with us. It was nice to be able to just walk down the street and meet people and talk at a safe distance. But the, I think the important thing from mental health perspective is just getting people out and walking about. So if we could continue this through the winter, it'd be great.
Thanks very much, council. And thanks very much, Michaela, for bringing that report to us today. Moving on to 6.2, Fred Gordon, administrator of Fergus BIA. And welcome, Fred. You've been here before. Well, not on Zoom, but we've seen you before.
There we go. Can everyone hear me?
We can.
Okay, perfect. Thanks, everyone. And I just want to quickly add how nice it is to see a group of really faces on my computer screen here right now, all safe, all healthy, all happy. It's great to see you here. I wish it was in person, but we'll get there eventually. Okay? Folks, greetings from the Fergus BIA and to the mayor and council and assembled the folks here. Greetings from the merchants of downtown Fergus. We want to firstly say or extend our thanks to Mayor Lynton, who very generously gives his personal time being the council rep to the Fergus BIA. We know with his additional duties as warden that this is puts even more pressure on his time and his dedication to us is, is really, really appreciated. And on top of that, the Fergus BIA receives incredible support from the township, from everyone, from my friend Carrie sitting here. And from the folks at, at the Works Department and parks and everything. You know, we're just one piece of a bigger puzzle. And because the whole puzzle works, the Fergus BIA works. So we want to go on record again, just thanking everyone for what they do for us all year long. So let's talk about what happened in Fergus this year. Where do we start, right? But the, the COVID crisis, of course, had a detrimental effect to downtown Fergus. But in 2020, we decided to take that negative and turn it into something positive and to, to make opportunities for ourself. So we moved the various money that had been set aside for events throughout the year to a shop local advertising scheme. So we, we utilized all sorts of local media in order to help emphasize to people that downtown Fergus was open for business. We did a great job with our website at, we ran a specialty COVID page through the summer, spring and summer months, which told people what stores were open, when stores were open, if they could go into the store, if they offered curbside service. And that we found was used a lot by locals and worked really, really well for the merchants. So that was something that had never been done before and presented us with a first. We also had a downtown Fergus participated in the International Rainbow Program. So we brightened the business windows during the height of the crisis through the rainbows painted across the doors and windows in order to try and cheer people up a little bit. And that was also well received. It looks great when you drive down St. Andrew's Street and see all the various rainbows there. The Fergus BIA provided Fergus tartan masks and Fergus tartan physical distancing floor decals free to our membership in order to get physical distancing and personal protection under control. And I don't know if you saw them, but they look really great. If we had had more, we could have sold them, but we, we didn't have enough to go around, but it was a good start. We had several new shops open in downtown Fergus despite the COVID, which has just left us feeling great. I think going into this year right now, we don't have any vacant storefronts going into the winter months here in downtown Fergus. We experimented with and we had awesome feedback, closing Provo Lane physically distanced eating and gathering place. Now that was so successful, we're looking to expand that program in 2020 long one along with bigger improvements. So to the Way Scale Building and in behind the, the parking in the Way Scale Building and Provo Lane, we're really going to be spending a fair bit of cash in there to tartan that area up. So following the Roger Brooks recommendations that we had, we're going to really start emphasizing the Scottishness of downtown Fergus. And what you're going to see at, at Provo Lane, there is going to be like the nucleus explosion of tartan going across all of, all of downtown Fergus. And we're looking forward to bringing that back in 2021. You'll also notice that we expanded our hanging basket and rail planters. So on our various bridges, we play, put boxes along the, the bridge handrails. And we expanded the number of hanging bridges, hanging baskets through years. So that really looked dynamite. Are, we, so we invented little, we, I think you've seen them, stupid scoop signs and don't litter signs. stupid scoop signs and don't litter signs that we plugged in all the public parks and everything. And those were really, really well received. And we've actually even received phone calls from other communities asking us what may because they want to copy us and put them up in their various towns as well. We had, we're the very generous recipients of a gift. One of the sculptures from the 2020 Alora Sculpture Project Program has been purchased and generously donated to downtown Fergus by an anonymous donor. And a new base for another sculpture will be sunk this spring over by the new St. David's Street Bridge. Our late night sip and shop holiday shopping program has expanded to four days over two weekends to help people physically distance and stay safe. And that happened last weekend. It's coming up this weekend as well, Thursday and Friday. So come on out and shop in downtown Fergus. We'd be delighted to see you. And our ever popular Elf on the Shelf holiday promotion will be back for another year. That kicked off today. So check your social media, win a prize for discovering which store the elf is in. So we too had our 2021 and 2020, 2021 annual general meeting on Wednesday, November 4th. And we've had a change in our executive as well. And I'd just like to introduce for the benefit of council, our, our remaining chair is Kim Jefferson. Our treasurer, our remaining treasurer is DePierre. And our members at large are Anne Axon, A.J. Broderick, Melinda Croft, Tanya Graham, Miranda Holmes, Tala Jenkins, Christelle Martin, Natalie McNeil, Rebecca Mullen, Joyce Reimer, and Bonnie Shore-Till. So at our annual general meeting, we passed our 2021 proposed operating budget. I think you all have a copy of it. It looks like that. I won't go through it line by line, but I'm pleased to inform council that the Fergus BIA did not feel that it was appropriate to ask for an increase in levy when some tough days for our members. So we are seeking a zero percent increase in our levy and anticipate operating budget of 104,62192 for the financial year 2021. That includes a very large carryover of over $47,000 from the 2020 year that just didn't get spent because of our lack of ability to hold functions and events that we had planned for. So that's the news from last year and looking forward to 2021 from downtown Fergus. I'll turn it back to the mayor.
Thanks very much, Fred. And I'll turn it over to council in a second. I just wanted to make a couple of comments on behalf of the township. It's my pleasure to spend time with really, really amazing BIA executive. You know, they just get things done. They had a really difficult year, similar to what Elora experienced, very difficult year. They learned how to adapt. They learned how to do things differently. Helped, helped work with our economic development department to help merchants get things online, curbside pickup. The amount of stuff that we were able to get accomplished in days that would have probably taken weeks before was incredible. And it was just because of the sense of urgency. So thanks and hats off to the whole last year's executive of the Fergus BIA for really, really hard work and getting things done on behalf of the merchants and stores in downtown Fergus. So I'll make sure that I give thanks to them. We have a meeting tomorrow morning. So I'll make sure that I bring the thanks of council to the volunteers of the Fergus BIA. Questions from council? Counselor Foster?
Thank you, Mayor. Fred, I'd like to ask you the same question. I'm hopeful that our merchants and restaurants are going to get through this tough year. So I just want to ask you, Fred, the similar question. What anecdotally and generally are you hearing about BIA members, merchants, restaurants, et cetera, in terms of lost revenue, lost profit, or lost employment? I'm hopeful that jobs aren't lost. Go ahead, Fred.
Thank you, Bob. Certainly, you know, I, I mean, we'd be telling tales if, if we said nothing bad happened. And certainly, our, our membership across the board is, is, has had a very, very difficult time financially. To the best of my knowledge right now, though, due to the COVID crisis, I'm not aware of any jobs that have been lost in downtown Fergus because of that, like permanently. There might have been a few layoffs with the anticipation that staff would come back when, when things get better. As a matter of fact, I think good old fashioned Scottish determination has, has really played a part in downtown Fergus during the COVID crisis. As I say, I'm, I'm truly flabbergasted, might be the wrong word, but to go into the winter months in downtown Fergus with what I believe to be zero window vacancy is somewhat unusual for us. And you know, as our community continues to grow and continues to evolve, the Fergus BIA is working very, very hard to reach out to the, the new developments in our community and make them aware of the fact that they do have a downtown and that there's the commerce and business to be conducted here. And we're doing a good job at that. And COVID has, has had its, knocked the winds out of our sails a little bit, but even Gus Social, if you recognize when you drove down St. Andrew's Street, they were the first folks here in our community to take advantage of the curbside patio program. So I, I'm so proud of the merchants of downtown Fergus who have taken some just about the worst thing that's happened to us since maybe the Second World War and turned it into a positive. So we're looking forward to getting a vaccine. We're looking forward to being open to serve the people of Center Wellington in the early part of 2021.
Great. Thanks, Counsel Dusmore.
I just wanted to comment to both BIAs because you had businesses come to town in, in the middle of a COVID crisis. So kudos to both your organizations for working through to that. And Fred, for you in particular, closing Provost Lane, you know, turned out to be a little bit of a different twist on the downtown core of Alora being shut down. Is that something that your merchants are looking for us to do and expand throughout the year?
The, the closing of Provo Lane, yes. The closing St. Andrew's Street did not work for, for our membership at all. We tested it out for a couple of weeks and it just, it just didn't work. And downtown Fergus has a heavy, heavy service oriented profile, many of which rely on seniors and they couldn't get close parking and, and things like that. But Neil, I got to tell you, the Provo Lane thing was genius. And we, we, we love it and we really want to expand that. And as I was saying, the work around the historic Way Scale Building and into the parking back of Provo Lane to do beautification and things there with, we, we can't wait for the new year just to get that project undergo.
Great. Thank you very much, Fred. And please extend our thanks to Kim Jefferson, the chair, and the whole group at the Fergus BIA. Thanks for coming tonight. And I'll see you tomorrow morning.
You bet.
Moving on to six point three, the Alora Center for the Arts, and we have a team here. We have Sheila Lee and there's Barry here as well. Okay, yeah, you are there. So I'll turn it over to the team and you guys, just a reminder that we have 10 minutes for this. So just a reminder to the delegates and take it away.
Great. Thanks, Kelly. Hi, Michaela. Good to see you. And I'd introduce, I'm Sheila Coop, the co-chair with Matt Ladner of the Alora Center for the Arts. And here with us tonight also is Lee Benel, who's the treasurer. Lee, maybe you want to wave. And Barry Smith, our secretary. And Lee's going to share a screen with you. He's doing it already.
Have I? Just a second here. Okay, sure. Can you see that, Sheila?
Yes.
Okay, great.
So I would like to thank Center Wellington Council and senior staff for the wonderful support we've had over the last several years. And for the chance to talk this evening, we understand that these are exceptional times with the influence of COVID and I'm sure very difficult, challenging budget decisions. We did submit our two requests to council, and I just want to quickly highlight those two requests. The first is we are looking for approval to use the $380,000 of the McDonald Fund grant as matching funds for a Canada Cultural Spaces fund application. This is due to the fact that we did not get funding from the ICIP. You approved us using matching funds last year. For that, we received no funding. And we've been advised and encouraged that Canada Cultural Space is the ideal place to go for this matching funding so that we can complete our, our extended front accessible, front entrance and our accessible washrooms and heritage windows in the basement. The second request is for a capital grant for 2021 of $20,000 so that we can continue to do repairs and upgrades on our heritage building as recommended by the very thorough and excellent building audit that was done by Seon Coulter this fall. And I would just add too, that we did send our draft audit for 2019, 20 to all council members today. It was not available to send earlier in the package. So that information is available for you. We have this show and it's not going to be too long. We know we've got 10 minutes. Just to show you an overview of how things have gone over the past year and how we've adapted to COVID and continued to meet our mandate of fostering creativity and fostering community. So Lee, we can move on to the first slide. Lee?
Here, do you not see it? I'm sorry.
Sorry, second slide.
I thought I'm showing it. Sheila's. Okay, I'm just going to go back to a different format. I apologize.
There we got it.
Okay.
So we just want to stress that we take a very community-based approach and seeing what the needs are and then providing art and creative solutions. And then we can go to the next slide. I'm just going to let run through the next five slides. They're basically just highlighting exactly what we do at the center and what kind of an umbrella we are for local artists and the community. So you can go, Lee. For children. As a place where people can meet. We've had neighborhoods and Woodfest and personal events. Larger, like our Creative Spark in the yard and our See the Forest Through the Trees, which was geared for mental health for youth and teens. And community outreach. Of course, we're very thrilled with our supportive arts program that received the Trillium Grant this year for program. And finally, just a visual culmination of the extent of the art center and how it was developed in the community. And I think it's great to see all the interconnections there. And our, our broad vision for the local community, being a downtown hub for for activities and also using the arts creativity as a vehicle for social and mental health, which we see as increasingly important, especially during COVID. And for visitors and tourists. And we have had a large number of visitors from the mill since we've been open since we reopened in September. And that links very well with our satellite gallery, which is at the mill, too. So it's a strong, we have a strong foothold in the tourism trade in Alora. And we hope for, this is also tied to our idea of expanding our front entrance and having our accessible washrooms and making sure that we keep this heritage building in good shape with yearly repairs and upgrades. And now Lee is going to talk to you.
Yeah, sorry. Thank you, Shealy. I just want to talk about the operational aspects and how it has, it has affected us for the year. As, as you all know, it's affected all of us. We had a really, really strong start to, to last year. We were really, I guess, firing on all cylinders, to be frank. We had a great board, great activities planned. Then, of course, we all know what happened, right? So we were up about 50% by March in terms of our programs, which was just amazing. And then all of a sudden, that kind of dashed, you know, it kind of died because we had to shut it all down. So, you know, our core things we do, things for adults, children and youth that were shut down for six months. We lost our major fundraising events. We had a gala committee set up that was going to be working on a gala at the mill that was going to drive some revenues. Creative Spark in the Yard was, was gone. And then also all the wedding and venues we're going to use for revenue generation that all got kiboshed as well. And COVID, of course, you know, all the staffing and resourcing, we had to lay off our staff for, for quite a while there. We did get them back on finally, though, to take care of them. And again, they were so, so important for us to move forward. We did work with the tenants as well to, for the CRE, CREB funding as well. So making sure we work in partnership with them to make sure they, they survive as well. Again, lots of stuff on the protocols and getting that put in place. It did infect our volunteers as well because a lot of them are senior citizens. They're definitely concerned about their health in this, in the COVID era. So you know, quite a large reduction on that volunteer help. So the impact on the revenue, and again, I'm just stressing this because this does impact our ability to fund our capital costs. So that's why I'm really am focusing on this a little bit. Program revenue, we had just a huge start, but it ended up falling 25%. Fundraising events, we actually made about $1,000, just a bit less. Again, that was a big piece. And then the capital grant, again, we've been so lucky to have the support from CW and the capital grant. Again, last year, we, we had to share the wealth, which is totally fine. But it just does impact our ability to, to drive that capital programs that we have, which all these other fundraising events drive toward, you know, the operational costs come first and then we get to pay for capital improvements. But we did that lot last year. Nonetheless, you know, the first six months, we had just over 6,000 visitors. Again, over indexed, we get most of them from the summer and fall, lots of participants, lots of artists, community volunteers, and again, just made our space available. This winter, we're doing a special program for students, opening it up for those people that are learning, remote learners for university and high school, to try to make sure this is valuable for our community, et cetera. And the community, sort of the supportive arts as well. And there we go. And I'm going to move over to you, Sheila. We have two minutes left. So take it away, Sheila.
So back to the, the building audit, and we just listed here some of, very few of the huge number of things that have to happen to the center. We're very lucky. The audit was presented to us in a way that go year by year, what we should be doing to keep this heritage building in good shape. And so those are just a few of those things we'd like to go at for 2021. And then finally, just to say that there are a number of other priority items that we'll be looking at and planning for that just in the short term would even be about $600,000. So we are just looking at our high priority ones and requesting a grant of 20,000 so we can get at some of those things. And just in closing, too, I would like to say that as well as being a wonderful community hub and providing an arts umbrella in our community and providing a large role in tourism, we are concerned about the fact that arts and culture funded the formula for funding them in our community and the fact that we'd like to see the arts and culture be funded in a greater measure, a bit closer to what recreation is funded. We know we're about 4% recreation cost now. So I know that's a longer term thing. And we just want to stress that we see that as very important for our community, important for mental and social health and important as part of economic development and tourism. So thank you very much. I think we, I think we beat the clock.
Thanks so much for your presentation. Thanks for keeping to our time limit here. Really appreciate that. It was a great presentation. Great to have a partner like Elora Center for the Arts and, and good to see that you're, even though it's been tough, you're surviving COVID and you have big plans ahead of you. And I, and thank you for the very clear ask. Appreciate, I know all of council appreciates the clarity there. So my suggestion is that we, we, we push that to our December 14th meeting. Our practice isn't to make decisions at, at the time that we hear a delegation. But I'd make a commitment that we would, that we have a fulsome discussion about. But I'd make a commitment that we would, that we have a fulsome discussion about this as a council at our next budget meeting, which is December 14th. So that's kind of the timeframe. Does that timeframe work for you, Sheila?
That would be perfect, certainly around the, using the matching funds for the grant application would be excellent for us. We'd like to get that application in in December if we could, so.
Okay, good. I'm glad that works. Questions from council, comments from council? Council McCray?
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I would just like to say thank you to the Laura Center for the Arts for the work that you've done in our community and all the effort you've done to help encourage arts in the community, what you do in terms of helping economic development and bringing tourist dollars to the town, to Center Wellington as a whole. And just the fact that there is an alternative to those of us who weren't great at sports, who were more, you know, leaning towards the arts. You've given us something to go for. So thank you.
Thanks, thanks very much to you and make sure that you provide our comments back to your team. Because we're really pleased that we have this center. We do see it as a jewel in our community. So thanks very much for coming today and we promise that we will talk about your requests that are December 14th. We'll put it on the agenda for December 14th, Council.
Great. Thank you much. Good night.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Sheila Berry and Lee. Moving on to John Scott Greenlands. Welcome, John. Good to see you.
Hello. All's good? Good. I can be heard?
Yeah, very clearly.
Okay, a little too loud. I do have a phys ed voice. I'm speaking on behalf of Greenlands. We are an advocacy group with 350 plus members. Our main concern is about the health and happiness of this citizens of Center Wellington. And we have realized that the decision people makes affects us directly in those two things, happiness and health. So we are advocating for, for, for certain actions. Over the past year, our focus has been bike lanes. We decided to think of, we realized that bike lanes is one thing that will push health and happiness more than anything else. And I would challenge anyone to, to, to think of something else that we can do at the municipal level that would push our community in that direction. I have three things I'm going to ask for or ask for. The first is some flexibility within the Trails Master Plan to, to discuss. The plan has 2013 thinking. This is a plan that happened well before the Voice of Greta Thunberg and obviously before COVID. So things change in society and we need some ability to adapt and change. The Trails Master Plan is good. It's a great beginning, but we do need some flexibility there. So I'm asking you to be a little open to that. Because the world is changing. The second thing I'm asking is to develop a safe bike route that connects our citizens to our trail system that we already have, which is off to our downtowns. Great to see the BIA here. Because I think we should be connecting with our downtowns, to our schools, to our cultural centers. So it's great to see the Elora Center for the Arts here. And most importantly, to each other. We are asking for a route that is more about equity. And it's a route that is more about getting people from all ages to be able to access it. And obviously, the last one, because this is a budget meeting and this shows the seriousness of the request is we are asking for a budget line to support this infrastructure. I want to talk just really quickly about the flexibility of the of the master plan. The way I think about this is if council created a communication master plan for their staff and then six months later, the iPhone was invented. I think you would change how you would communicate with each other because of that invention. And the same thing is happening right now in regards to our health and happiness and in particular to biking. If you've been sort of aware of that. One of the, for the number two thing about trying to develop this bike route. Right now, it's, we have township and COVID has been very challenging in our communication. They seem very interested in it. Right now, the working name is the Welly Loop. It is something that we've been using for the last four months. People meet on Sundays and we ride the loop. We've used it for fundraising for Portage, raised over $1,200 for Portage. So it's something that exists. It just needs to be safer so that all people can access it safely and all, like all ages. One of the things about bike infrastructure is it, it's not just infrastructure, not just roads, not just recreation. It encompasses a lot of things. So what we are asking is if we can have a citizen-led committee with some interesting staff, interested staff members from recreation, from tourism, from economic development to, to be part of this, this project. The, the way we're thinking about this is we would like it to happen for this summer. This may be our last summer with COVID. We will have gone through a really tough winter and we would like to help our council give the gift to the citizens of Center Wellington. And the gift would be this route. Route. It's there. It just needs a little bit of effort. It needs sort of everyone in the same boat, sort of paddling in the same direction. And that is what we are after. So this is a challenge to you. I, I, I know it's something you have not talked about. It is not in your pre-budget talks for this year. So I'm asking you to pivot. I'm asking you to change. And that relates to the third point is need some money in the infrastructure for this. You choose one, one project, postpone it, put the money in for this bike infrastructure and you have something. You have something. And this action, this, this thing that we could create would move, would move us in the right direction. It would be in one way a legacy. So it'd be like, see this bike lane here, this bike route, not necessarily lane, this bike route. This was the beginning. This started in COVID and this was the beginning of when people decided that we had to live a healthy and happier life. So I'm putting it as a challenge. Another way to think about it. Think about New York City without Central Park. What would those people be like without Central Park? And this, this could be your moment in your time and we would like to help move towards that. I would love to hear the opinions and thoughts that I know who to talk to and try to convince more of because there's so much statistics and numbers to go behind my flowery words. So thank you.
Thanks, John. Really appreciate your flowery words.
Okay.
Really appreciate you coming tonight too, to give us a heads up and give us some thoughts. If I could ask you to, obviously you have something in writing there. If you could submit something to us that lays out all the things that you mentioned. I'm glad that you identified a lot of those areas in your speech, but if we can have something in writing prior to our next December 14th meeting, we'll be able to have a little bit more of a targeted discussion as members of council. Obviously in budget and the COVID budget at that, we're going to have to make some real, real tough decisions here. And we need to see something because I would want to make sure that this gets the attention that it deserves. So if you could commit to doing that, that'd be appreciated for sure.
Absolutely. And I have worked with Andy and we, so he is aware of it and Colin is aware of it. Ian, and, and it just, I, we just sort of need, I just want to make sure we have a bigger push towards it. So I can definitely do that for you.
Great. That'd be great. Questions, comments from council? Council McCray?
Thanks, Mayor. And hello, John. Just a quick question. Do you have more specific what you would like to see? I mean, you're talking fairly generally and you have to do that in 10 minutes, but do you have fairly specific suggestions that you would like to see?
Absolutely. And it has been mapped out. As I said, it existed, even has had media coverage. So it's there. And there's not much that needs to be done. It, it just, it just needs that push. And I would, I like to see this more with other parts of the government to be involved. As I said, culture, economic development and tourism thing. But yes, I have specifics, but I need township to help me. Like, I don't know how much a crosswalk costs is sort of thing, you know? So I, 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 we will work that together with township, hopefully.
Council Foster?
Thank you, Mayor. John, thank you for that excellent presentation. I have just a couple of brief questions, John. First of all, can you just kind of identify what, what kind of dollars are we talking here? What sort of ask are you asking for in terms of dollars? And, and secondly, John, I know example cycling tourism is very, very big in rural Quebec. And I wondered if you could speak to what the potential impact might be if we could increase cycling-based tourism here in, in Center Wellington.
I think, Bob, you already answered one of the questions because Quebec is a great success. And just from a personal, five of my last six holidays have been in Quebec because of that bike infrastructure. I'm not a huge bike fan. It's just something I like to do. And there's so many people like me, but we just need safe places to ride. And that's what has. Yes, there is so much written about it. I just didn't want to get, obviously get into the dirt in the details with 10 minutes. So I went the flowery emotional route. But yes, I can get you that information. There's so much research behind it. It is, I once heard Neil mention Neil Dunsmore. What is it? The new golf or something like that, Neil? I forget the line you used, but it is driving a lot of people. And if you, well, I mean, one Sunday, we did an audit on South River Road where the, the trail meets South River Road. Over 200 people passed either walking or cycling in tours, past that spot. So that just gives you an idea. Oh, money, money, money. But once again, I don't have all the details. Like, I don't know the cost of a pedestrian crosswalk. And I also know right now there are grants that we can use. Ontario has one with, if you have a provincial highway going through you, so we can implement. I know Nipissing area used that grant to do bike infrastructure. So there's that to go after. But if you wanted to make South River Road safer, that would cost you about $60,000. Based on what my ideas, but I would have to go through Colin Baker and Andy Goldie. And that's because that's not my expertise, just what I've read, I've read and researched.
Council Kitter?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, John, for being persistent and and I, I'd like to talk to you a little bit more about this. I'm, I am a big fan for this and especially, you know, what you're saying about COVID and people getting outside and also. So one thing I wanted to ask is you're, you just mentioned the South River Road and you said it would cost $60,000. Is it signage or is it actually paving? Or is it like a little more specific like?
Well, I mean, obviously there's like the gold standard and I'm not advocating right now to go for the gold standard. So like a gold standard would be a completely separated bike lane. Like totally away from road. That's gold standard. But with something like South River Road, a narrowing of, of the road for the vehicles is a common practice. Those sort of bullards or pylons, not in the middle of the road, but off to the right. The ones that we place in the middle of the road are not the best for cyclists because cars can't move over. But those sort of pylons on the side of the road are useful. Obviously, speed limits. Just things like a stop sign at the, I think is it first line in, in South River Road where there's a three-way stop. Possibly a flashing light or something where the trailway crosses because that is a dangerous section of South River Road. So it's a combination of, of a lot of things. And to be honest, the route that we have, the Welly Loop, the, one of the main ideas is to connect the citizens. And that's what's really missing in the master plan. It doesn't allow an equal access for our citizens to connect to trailways. So that's sort of what it's about. And the South River Road section is really the most dangerous. It's the one that makes most people the most uncomfortable. The rest of it is typically beautiful and easy and, and nice. Yeah.
Council McCray?
Hey, Marilyn. I just want to say thank you, John, for coming tonight and sharing your vision with council. I mean, what you're sharing has a potential in terms of economic development to help both BIAs in terms of attracting cyclists who want to come and spend the day here cycling and then go and visit the restaurants for meals. I also like the fact that it's focused on our citizens' health in terms of providing another route for people to get out and cycle or to walk. And I appreciate you're taking me for a bike ride the one day on the Welly Loop and showing me all the connection points and linkages and how you can go into the downtown cores, tie the schools into safe routes for children to use. So I certainly think that you've got a great idea here for us to consider further.
Thanks. Thank you, Ian. And if you think about your strategic plan, your strategic plan has active caring communities, healthy growth, safe roads, strong economy, good financial management and, and good governance. I think the bike can help you with all those. I'm not sure if it can help you with good government unless you make the decision to go for it. Therefore, I think it will be a good government. It, it, I can't think of one thing that hits all the things that you want. And it's, it's cheap, which is good financial management. Research shows like it's the best recreational dollars, bar none. If you put money in bike infrastructure, just for recreation, you, it is the cheapest way to go and to get the most participants at the most age levels.
Council Dunsmore?
Don, thanks for your presentation. And we've talked before and, and I'm all for a safer bike community and more bike trails through the community. It is the new golf as far as tourism goes. If we, if we could have found a way, if we'd had the will to open up Middlebrook Road with a bike lane on either side, we would have connected this community to Waterloo. We should have brought a lot of money for it. Always, always, always. And I said to this to you before, when we first connected. Nobody likes to get down into the weeds, but it's in the weeds where the, the problems occur and we need to, we need to vet that out. And you know, I know there is a new Trails map coming out. And I think there's some interesting things in there that help cycling along the way. And I think we need to take it further. And I want to thank you for coming tonight just to let us know your thoughts so that we can dig deeper into the weeds and, and dig this out and vet it out. But Matt, I don't know if that trail map has been made public yet. I think the council needs to see it. The CSAC Committee had a quick peek at it, but I think there's a lot of good things coming.
And thank you. And I would love it if we can get the weeds done. We all work together, all the different groups and get something up for the summer. That is the key. And it's like a gift you're giving your community. And I just think, I just love that concept. So I I would, I I'd love to work hard on behalf of that, yeah.
Great, thanks so much, John. Appreciate you coming and talking to us today, and and we'll talk more about this on December the fourteenth.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Moving to six point five, uh we have Elizabeth Bender, Matthew Bennett-Monti, Terry Reeves of the Fergus Scottish Festival. Welcome. I'll let you guys decide who's speaking when. I mean, it doesn't say in my cheat sheet here. But somebody has to speak.
There we are. I'm I'm green for go. Folks, it's great to to spend time with with so many positive individuals just willing to improve our community. You know, this is what it's all about, brainstorming, um and and really the support for for one another is uh is is really overwhelming at times. The Scottish Festival is is pleased to be meeting with council to request ongoing support with capital projects in partnership with the Fall Fair and the Township with respect to the Centre Wellington Community Sportsplex. We wish to request fifty thousand dollars of the OLG funding allocated to the arts, culture, and heritage for ongoing infrastructures and their projects on the sports bike, the sportsplex grounds that complement existing work that is being accomplished currently. The Scottish Festival has experienced great success over the past several years, and as a result, attendance has grown steadily. In two thousand nineteen, we welcomed twenty-one thousand plus guests from our local community across Canada, the US, and internationally. In two thousand and twenty, we were, much like many others, forced to make the heartbreaking decision to cancel our event due to the pandemic. However, we created a successful virtual event with twenty thousand plus viewers as well as safety, community-based activities that were exceedingly popular. And I do invite council and all guests this evening to go to our website and and have a look, see what what we were able to put together. As a result of this ongoing popularity, we have seen a positive impact on our local economy and our volunteer engagement. Twenty, a January twenty twenty study by the Ontario Ministry of Heritage, Sport, Tourism and Culture indicated that the economic impact of the festival on Centre Wellington came in at over three point five million dollars. It's pretty impressive. With the cancellation of this year's event, twenty twenty-one will now mark the seventy-fifth anniversary of the Scottish Festival. We affectionately dubbed this version two point oh two one. We anticipate we may again be presenting in a modified version of our usual event. However, strategies are in place for us to celebrate this milestone. As a longstanding community stakeholder, we believe the Centre Wellington Sportsplex is a showpiece, and it's enjoyed by many user groups. Last year, we told you how members of the community services team, the Scottish Festival and the Fall Fair had been successful in collaborating on a project to update woefully inadequate and in some cases even unsafe sportsplex utilities. We have pooled ideas, resources, partnerships, and funding to complete overdue infrastructure projects for our mutual benefit, future user groups, and ultimately, the community as a whole. Last year, we presented that this endeavor would consist of multiple phases. After COVID-related delays, we are pleased to announce that the first phase is scheduled for this spring. And this will include repairing and updating all existing power panels by replacing faulty receptacles, breakers, and the installation of light standards for after-sunset security. A portion of the Phase Two upgrades will also take place to the western portion of the grounds with new primary underground hydro to power new transformers where usage is heaviest and with water li- water utility upgrades. A secondary hydro supply, electrical panels and outlets, and updates are to ensure reliable service to the shaded camping area, and they will also be contemplated. We would like to take advantage of this opportunity to include the completion of supplemental projects specific to the grounds, including fiber communications infrastructure, pavement improvements, and additional campground upgrades. Taking a proactive approach while conditions are optimal and the work is already being contemplated, we will see this as the most sensible use of resources and funding to complete the full sportsplex project as originally planned. Throughout the process, the town, the Scottish Festival have met on a regular basis, ensuring smooth project delivery, coordination with official township planning, as well as ensuring compliance with relevant construction codes. Our project management committee will continue to consult and collaborate with the Township of Wellington, Centre Wellington, my apologies, Parks and Recreation Department, the Township of Centre Wellington Information Technology Department, and Centre Wellington Hydro. We kindly ask that you consider the funding of this progressive infrastructure project. When we are able to return to presenting our traditional events, patrons of the Scottish Fall Festival, sorry, the Scottish Festival, the Fall Fair, Canada Day festivities, sports tournaments, local schools, and camping groups will all benefit from reliable utilities, increased safety, and greater connectivity. There will be an impact with respect to post-COVID revenue generation and peace of mind for the township and events alike, given improved safety measures and access to hydro and water. We are keen to add value to the mutual investments in Phase One and Two. And with the support from our municipal council, we will ensure the longevity and relevancy of this impressive community facility. Local events and activities like the Fergus Scottish Festival bring the community together in celebration while participating in sport, culture, heritage, art, music, and most importantly, attracting people to our community. We look forward to an upgraded facility that allows us to do this with the best infrastructure and technology available. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks very much, Matthew, for that presentation. Um and again, our thanks from council and our community for all the great work that you and the whole the Ferg- Fergus Scottish Festival team have done. You know, again, a very, very difficult year for the festival, um you know, and and just appreciate that you've all stuck together. I I was, had the opportunity to be invited to your AGM the other day. And it was just amazing to see the wide variety of different people that you have who are uh excited and passionate about the Fergus Scottish Festival, and that bodes really well for uh this festival in the future. And it's great for us to know here at council that um this tradition is in such good hands right now. So thanks so much, and thanks for your presentation today. Turn it over to questions uh and comments from council. Council Foster?
Thank you, uh Mayor, and and thank you, Matthew, for a very, very good presentation. Matthew, just recalling from last year, um I believe there are some contributions and from uh other perhaps skilled electricians or uh even some volunteer labor uh adding into this product uh project. And that, that's a good thing about it, it basically leverages uh any dollars. I wondered if you could just refresh my memory, Matthew, uh on that subject. Is there not some contributions in kind or some otherwise of volunteer labor? Or contributions of uh things like transformers and and uh wiring and panels and stuff?
Thank you, Council Foster. Yes, you're absolutely correct. It has been really incredible to see uh members of the community come together and business owners, and and in a tough time, um having commitments from local contractors to to either donate labor or supplies, necessary materials. I'm not sure if anyone has tried to do a renovation in twenty twenty or buy a piece of lumber. It's, it's really challenging, and and we've got people that are prepared to come to to the table and do whatever they can. And, you know, with with whatever funds we can generate, it it just truly improves our equity uh in 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 such a great community facility. And and having an opportunity like having so many local businesses, and I and I do emphasize local. It it it's truly, it's a symphony. Um we've had, uh we we've also uh applied and and have put to use already a, an Ontario Farm Credit, or sorry, uh Farm Credit Canada uh grant, and and that's assisted us. Um and when I say us, I I wish to say the collective. Um I truly, uh we truly believe that uh the Fall Fair is also a tremendous uh event. And uh and and we support them and encourage them and their longevity. And and I know that uh they they've really struggled with the tenants in the past years, and we want to see them survive.
Any other questions from council? Council Foster?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Supplementary question for Matthew. Yes, uh very, very good news story, Matthew. The second question I have is in regarding this infrastructure and the impact on other field sports such as field lacrosse or soccer or baseball, will the sporting, I wonder, just explain in a little more detail, how might other sports groups use this uh infrastructure on the field at the sportsplex uh on a week-to-week basis? Non-special events, you know, regular sporting activities in the fields.
Thank you, Council Foster. So again, as we're coming into post-COVID life, we are going to, and and I I don't wish to speak on behalf of Centre Wellington Sports or or those user groups. But I believe it's fair to say that people want to be outside. People will be outside. What we need to do is we need to have the adequate infrastructure in place to support exterior activities. We need wash stations. We need to be clean. We need um uh hydro to generate any electrical sort of appliances that we may need, lighting. You know, it's, it's, it's gonna be a new, i- i- it'll be a brave new world, and and we want to be prepared. We want to be prepared to host. And again, this, we we need to think big picture. The Fergus Scottish Festival, um truly, we see this as as such a fantastic venue. This is not solely the Fergus Scottish Festival venue. This is our venue. This is the, this is the community's venue. And and we endeavor to do whatever we can to make it better.
Council Kitter?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh thank you, Matthew, for your presentation. I'm totally impressed that you got twenty thousand people, uh even though the the event didn't, with, you know, you had to postpone that. I'm wondering, is is this, you're asking for fifty thousand dollars on top of the fifty thousand dollars that you had last year? Did you use that, some of those funds, or or do you still have some of them?
Thank you, uh Council Kitter. So um as a matter of fact, you're absolutely correct. We had, uh we had asked uh council um uh one year ago uh for one hundred thousand dollars. And um and council uh and the OLG were so gracious in in allowing us to be part of um of this uh this great grant. And uh and we were, we were given fifty-five thousand dollars. From that fif- that fifty-five thousand dollars, um obviously, uh didn't get us the the completed product. We, as earlier, uh we mentioned um a grant from Farm Credit Canada. The Fergus Scottish Festival has also contributed. The Fergus Fall Fair has contributed as well as the township has also uh made made a contribution. This combined, uh as as previously mentioned, with in-kind donations from local contractors and Centre Wellington Hydro, what, wow, what a great resource they've been. My my hat, uh all of our hats go off to uh go out to uh off to to Centre Wellington Hydro. Uh they're, they've really been so great in in assisting. But yes, we are falling short. We've got, we've got open trenches, and and this is why we're saying this is, this is the 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 most reasonable time to to possibly be be thinking of our future, and and we don't want to open a trench again. And so um what, however, we can stretch that dollar and 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 have that infrastructure in place so we don't need to uh to open trenches again needlessly or or impact or interrupt any other goings-on uh on the field. If if we can collaborate that, we we truly believe that this is the most sensible time.
Great, uh thank you very much, Matthew. Uh thanks for being here, Elizabeth, and thanks for your presentation request. Again, just as I mentioned before, we will bring that to our December fourteenth meeting. And just for everyone, everyone's benefit, um who came to speak to us today. I'm sure you know, but in case you don't, we're seeing a two million dollars less in OLG funds this year. So we have two million dollars less to to work with. So we have, as I mentioned before, we have some difficult decisions to make. There's a lot of very good opportunities here uh that contribute significantly to life uh in the Centre Wellington, so council is on the hook to make those decisions. Um and we'll have a fulsome discussion on that on December the fourteenth. So thank you very much um for coming. Uh to you, um Fergus Scottish Festival. I Laura Center for the Yars is still here. I see John Scott's still here. Thanks for kicking around. I mean, you guys just don't want to leave. Appreciate, appreciate it. And just so you know, um anytime we have a council meeting, you can stay later. We're going to be here for a little bit longer because we have a little bit of business to take care of. So you're more than willing to join us. It's always nice to have friendly faces uh at Centre Wellington Council meetings. So thanks very much for taking the time to be delegations for us today.
Thank you.
And and your mic is still on there, Matthew, but I think you did a great job too. Gotcha. It's a good thing you didn't say anything else. We've all had those Zoom meetings, haven't we? So we have to, council, we have to go back because it's imperative that we hit five point one. But our clerk also uh mentioned that I never took, I didn't take a vote for deferring five point two and five point three to our January fifth meeting. We got a mover and a seconder, but um I didn't call for the vote. So if we could uh call for the vote all in favor of deferring five point two to end five point three to January the fifth, our first next planned budget meeting, uh that'd be great. All in favor? Okay, then that's Carrie. There, now are you happy, Carrie and Lisa? Okay, so we do have to, we do have to handle five point one, um because there is a recommendation there that is required. That's not to say we're not going to get to, um Council Kitter had a motion on, and then we'll, we'll add that to our uh December fourteenth meeting as well. Um but, so I'm not forgetting about that, Council Kitter. But we do have to um deal with five point one. So I am going to read the recommendation that the Council of Township of Centre Wellington approved the inclusion of the ten-year capital forecast, vehicle replacement schedules, and equipment replacement schedules as outlined in report COR twenty twenty dash sixty-one dated December first, twenty twenty, in the draft twenty twenty-one budget. And that the Council of Township of Centre Wellington authorized the award of the request for tender number twenty-three dash twenty pickup trucks to Barry Cullen Chevrolet Cadillac Inc. in the amount of sixty-six thousand three hundred fifty-two dollars plus optional equipment and exclusive of HST. Can I get a mover and a seconder for that? Council Dunsmore, seconded by Council Foster. Uh any questions, comments from council on that one? Council Foster?
Thank you, Mayor. Right, we we kind of got bogged down in our discussion, but I'm really hopeful that uh encourage encourage staff to try to redeploy those, uh, trucks. They may not be suitable for first responders in a, in a, in an emergency, but I think they're more than suitable for patching potholes or for pulling, uh, lawnmowers around and things of that nature. So I'm really hopeful that we could keep those in our fleet and see them, uh, have an impact in, in some other area, perhaps deferring another truck purchase.
And I think staff indicated that they would be, uh, looking, uh, into that possibility. Council McCray?
Thank you, Marilyn. This is more of a question in light of what we just heard from, uh, the Scottish Festival in terms of their ask. To me, it seems like what they're asking for is basically improvements to the Fergus Sportsplex complex. And I'm wondering why that wouldn't be covered under one of our normal, uh, capital asset costs? Why are we having a, um, festival come to us asking for money to upgrade our own facilities? Why would we not just incorporate those upgrades into our typical asset management? I just, I, it just seems odd to me.
Yeah, that's, that's a good question. And I, I know it came up last year, uh, when we talked to them about it. And, um, the reason is, is we do have it in their capital plans, but it's a long way off. And they wanted to, um, push that closer. So they were willing to put some of their funds to this, um, in order to push this up, uh, in the, um, in the timeline. So I think, uh, I'll just verify that, um, with staff here, but that's what I remember from last year. Can somebody back me up on that?
That's correct. Marilyn, as well, the fact that, uh, some of the infrastructure previous to this was all done, uh, community-based, implementation for when the hydro and all that was placed in first. And it was always, uh, looked at as a community component, not just for the sportsplex.
But if we remember back though, council, um, that was part of the nature of our discussion when we, um, provided $55,000 to them because we did recognize it was our facility and there would be other uses besides the skirt, uh, Fergus Scottish Festival. So that played into, um, the decision that we made, I believe, at that point as well. Council Foster?
Thank you, Mayor. And, and Council McCray, it's, it's a, it's an excellent point, but I, I think we want to keep our eye on the ball here. This has been deficient for many years, and, and they're wanting to get it done for the benefit of the festival. And because that's a major community event, the money, uh, any grant money we would give is going to be leveraged with contributions in kind, uh, basically volunteer labor from skilled contractors and electricians. So we're getting the improvements we ought to be doing, um, um, at a very, very good price because of that leverage and those volunteers.
Sorry, um, I'm just, I'm just questioning why we're delving into this right now because we are going to be talking about this in some detail on December the 14th, uh, when we talk about both the Laura Center for the Arts and the Scottish Festival. So, um, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to, um, cut off the discussion. I'm just saying that we are going to have a, a pretty detailed discussion of this whole package of OLG funds. And I think it probably makes sense to have a, a fulsome discussion of OLG funds. It's not going to be easy. Um, there, we've had some requests, uh, come to us today, and we don't have that much money to work with, with OLG this year. But that's all going to be, um, presented by staff, and we'll have, uh, a detailed discussion, um, on December the 14th. Council McCray?
I guess the reason I'm just raising the, the issue is if we vote to approve 5.1, does that mean we can't come back and discuss it again on December 14th? I just, where I'm coming from is I think it's a damn shame that the Scottish Festival has to put the money that may come from the OLG towards upgrading infrastructure that ultimately is the township's benefiting from because it is our property. It's going to be our, our stuff in the end. That money, they could be using towards some other aspect of their festival. I just, and I just have trouble with the way the money is going out of one pocket and back into the other when the festival could be using it for something else rather than paying for infrastructure that really benefits the township.
And I, and I guess I can't speak for them, but this is what they want. Um, and I think that, that it does benefit us for sure, but this is what they've requested, right? So, um, um, I, I, that's what they've come to us with for, for two years in a row. This is where they want to put their priority, right? Council Kitteris?
Can we discuss this next meeting? And then just continue?
Yeah, that's what I suggested. Yep. Okay, um, well, and we'll discuss this, uh, next meeting. So, uh, for this motion that we had, have had moved and seconded all in favor? And that's Carrie. Thank you very much and, uh, good discussion today. And we'll, uh, have a great rest of the evening, and we'll see you back on December 14th, if not sooner. Oh, yeah, I guess I should adjourn. Sorry. Council Kitteris, can you move us to adjourn? Uh, Council Dunsborough seconded all in favor? Uh, we are adjourned. Thanks very much.